All right. This public hearing of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 5:04 PM. I am very pleased that you have taken the time to join us this evening. I extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire school board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. We have established a quorum and I will call roll. Okay, all seven members are present. The next item on our agenda is the public comment, public address period. This is the time for citizens, staff, or students to provide comments to the board. A meeting that is open to the public under the Act is one that the public is entitled to attend. However, the Act does not give the public a right to speak at such public meetings, except to address their grievances through the proper channels. As a courtesy to the public, the Judson Independent School District Board of Trustees allows for time for public comments. Statements or questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of the meeting, so please sign up for public audience if you have comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and the topic of your comments must be written on the sign-in sheet prior to the start of the meeting, which was five o'clock for the public hearing. It will be six o'clock if you are here for the regular board meeting, which is located in the rear of the room. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to complete his or her comments. As the presiding officer, I will strictly enforce that time limit. Also, profanity, yelling, inappropriate, uncivil, or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. In accordance with Judson ISD Board Policy, BED Local, in the event your comment, in my judgment as the presiding officer, constitutes a complaint or charge against an employee or officer, it will be necessary for me to interrupt you, ask you to stop, and direct you to seek resolution of your complaint through the district's appropriate formal grievance policy. DGBA for employee complaints, FNG for student or parent complaints, and GF for public complaints. By law, the Judson Independent School District Board of Trustees cannot lawfully discuss, deliberate, or make comments, or make a decision on any matter in the public comment period, which is not specifically listed on the board agenda for this meeting. If you have handouts to distribute to the board, please hand them to the secretary to the Board of Trustees next to the podium. With those cautions in mind, we will be happy to hear public comments regarding the public hearing and the turnaround plans. We have one person signed up to speak, Ms. Laura Wickmire.
Good evening. When we talk about turnaround plans, we hear about test scores, curriculum, and instructional coaching. Those things matter, but what's missing from every turnaround plan I've reviewed for Metzger, Masters, Park Village, and Kirby Middle School is something just as critical, bullying prevention. My son attended Metzger Middle School for eighth grade. He was an honor student, confident, hardworking, and focused, and he became the target of bullying. Then he became the target of bullying. He was physically assaulted more than once, made statements trying to get help, and despite multiple adults being made aware, no bullying investigation was ever conducted. The adults failed to act, not because my son didn't speak up, but because the system didn't respond. He kept showing up, trying to focus, trying to move forward, but without accountability or support, the situation escalated and his grades slipped. What happened at Metzger exposed a gap that I believe still exists today, a lack of follow-through documentation and prevention at a campus level. In 2022-23, there were 2,195 instances of conflict. Only 155 of those were referred to administration, and only 13 were ruled as bullying. In 2023-24, 19 were ruled as bullying, and last year, 27 cases were ruled as bullying. That is not just at Metzger. That is the total number of cases for over 30 campuses in Judson. When I look at Metzger's current turnaround plan and the ones for Masters, Park Village, and Kirby, I see a lot about test scores and instruction, but nothing about how we protect the students who sit in those classrooms. How can a school truly turn around when the emotional safety of its students is not even part of the plan? Bullying doesn't just hurt feelings, it destroys learning environments. A student who feels unsafe cannot focus, cannot engage, cannot grow. Teachers can't effectively, can't teach effectively when classrooms are filled with fear or distraction, and schools cannot turn around academically if they don't first turn around the culture that allows bullying behaviors to go unchecked. Every one of the campuses under turnaround status serves students who deserve not only stronger academics, but stronger protection. The Texas Education Code through David's Law and Senate Bill 2050 already requires comprehensive bullying prevention plans in local committees, but how are we bringing them to life? If we want higher test scores, we must start with safer schools. If we want attendance to improve, we must make students want to show up. I'm asking the board and this administration to make bullying prevention a visible, measurable part of every turnaround plan, not as an afterthought, but as a pillar, one that tracks prevention efforts, restorative practices, and accountability, because no school can truly turn around until every student feels safe enough to stand tall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wickmire. Okay, Dr. Fields, I'll turn it over to your team for the turnaround plans.
I appreciate you. So, tonight, in our public hearing, we want to cover the turnaround plans for specific campuses. I would say that in 2023, it used to be the targeted improvement plans, and then in 2023, it kicked into turnaround plans. Now, the 23, 24, and 25 results came really consecutively over the past summer, and there are some things that we were doing in the interim, but tonight, we're going to talk about specifically the turnaround plans for those campuses and how this came about. So, Dr. Toppin, Dr. Saunders. I would also say Dr. Toppin and Dr. Saunders. I'd like for you to address some of the discipline issues that we did go over in that first three days of school, where we did talk about, and one of the things being bullying. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fields. Good evening to Board President, Board Vice President, and Secretary, and all the board members on this evening. We're excited to share the turnaround plans that we have in place for the four campuses that have been identified by the state as campuses that need to be turned around. Before we even get started, we just kind of want to talk about why we're ending up where we are right now, before we go any further than what we have been. As you well know, that there was some timeframe where we weren't getting any ratings at all from the state because of some lawsuits that had been filed. And then, when the state did release the ratings, they released them all within four months. And so, we had 2023, 2024, and 2025 all released at the same time. Typically, what you would have is you would get a rating released, and then you'll have a year before you have to address that rating. But the way these were released, they came back, like, back-to-back within a matter of four months, hence where we are this evening. So, we are going to cover the TAPS, the turnaround plans, and I probably will be calling them TAPS for the rest of this evening, because it's just easier for me to say. We are going to be covering the TAPS in groups of four, branched around the criteria that we're required to have in the TAPS when we submit it to the state on November the 21st. So, we're going to start with that.
I'm having some issues here.
I know, there we go. And so, Kristin and I... Kristin and I are going to take turns with going through these and talking about the different levels, whether it be elementary or middle school. So, I'm going to begin with trying to give you a pretty much broad definition of what a turnaround plan is. So, if you want to look at what we're having here on the thing... So, a turnaround plan, as defined by TEAs, is a comprehensive improvement plan that is required by the state. And so, in August of 2025, we, as a district, received notification that we had four of our Judson ISD campuses that were going to need a turnaround plan beginning this year, '25-'26. And so, we were able to immediately start working on it. We had already started working on a plan, because we do our campus improvement plans starting in June for the following year. So, we had already started working on a plan for those campuses based on what we had seen in their star performances, but we got the notification in August, and so, we definitely switched over until beginning with our turnaround plan. And we posted our first initial plan that was posted, was posted on September the 16th, 2025. And the plan has gone through different reiterations since then, but we had to post it 30 days before the board votes on it to get public feedback on our turnaround plans. In addition, a turnaround plan is more intensive than a campus improvement plan, than a targeted improvement plan, which we're more familiar with. The turnaround plans came into play in 2023, when the state started requiring it for campuses that had a consistent showing of underperformance, which means that the campuses had earned an F multiple times, either twice or more than two times. And so, the turnaround plan, the purpose of the plan is to make sure that that campus earns a C rating in two years. So, from the time that you submit the plan to the state and the state accepts it, you have two years to turn around that campus from an F to a C. The turnaround also focuses on fundamental changes that have to occur at those campuses that are based on TEA's Effective Schools Framework. And I think that most of the board members, we gave you a copy of that book and what that book contains. And so, when you're talking about the Effective Schools Framework, what TEA declares is that these are the five levers, the five pieces that must be in place in order for a school to be deemed effective. You must have strong school leadership and planning. We call this instructional leadership. You have to have strategic staffing, a positive school culture, high-quality instructional materials and assessments, and you must show persistent, consistent, effective instruction in what we call Tier One. That's in every classroom that we're showing, that we are receiving, and that the students are receiving, and the teachers are delivering effective instruction. In addition to the Effective Schools Framework, TEA also requires that if you have a turnaround plan, these are the seven criteria that must be in your turnaround plan. So, if you looked at the plans before you came this evening, they've been posted for quite some time. There are seven areas that we broke the plan into, because we have to specifically address these areas in our turnaround plan in order for it to be accepted by TEA. And those seven are the ones that are listed there, stakeholder engagement. How many people are you bringing in from your school community, from your community that are around your school, businesses that are around? How many people are having a voice on what you're putting into your turnaround plan? They want you to post the plan, they want you to get feedback on it, and incorporate that feedback into the plan. So, we have had our plans posted for 30 days. Parents were given a survey link that they could go through and provide feedback to the campuses, and the principals received that feedback and incorporated those pieces into their turnaround plan. You also have to have a school improvement strategy. So, that is what the board, or what the district has decided is going to be, a strategy that you're going to work on as far as what are we doing about these campuses? And these strategies are supposed to be in-depth and pulled from something that you're doing more than what you're doing for other campuses. And so, one of those things that you could probably see is that we had, you know, leadership changes. We also had staffing changes, we had redesigns of the master schedule. Some of the campuses are involved in a grant. So, those type of things are what the things we're talking about, a school improvement strategy. You also have to choose a highly qualified instructional material, instructional thing. So, a new type of textbook, for what type of things are you using that are going over and beyond than what the campus has used before? Because the way the state looks at this is that if you were using this already, then you wouldn't be in the position that you are in right now. So, what are you going to bring in that that's different? And so, with the State Board of Education taking over instructional materials and coming up with their approved list of highly qualified instructional materials, it is highly encouraged that campuses that are in this turnaround phase use something that is on that list of materials that has been provided by the state, or use something that is similar, that may have been what we have, the new list of materials that are put up there on the State Board of Education's page. It's the ones that they have approved so far. But before that, there was another list of materials that could be adopted by a school district, and some of the materials that we're talking about have been on our campuses anywhere from seven to eight to 10 years already. And they were highly qualified until the state came in and decided they were going to make their own list of highly qualified, and they're changing that list almost on a monthly basis. They're adding or taking away things off of that list. The other thing is that you have to have, as far as your success criteria, you have to prove that you are providing support and capacity building. That means that everyone that is involved in this turnaround process has to have support provided to them, whether it's through professional development, whether it's through job embedded development, whereas with outside partners coming in and working with the school. How is the district providing support to these principals that are going through this process? And is that support consistent? And how are you measuring if that support is ongoing? So, if you looked at our turnaround plans that we had posted up, you will see that there's a lot of things about observation and coaching and feedback cycles in there, because that is one of the things that TEA is saying, that it doesn't do any good to have a plan if it's not getting down to the teacher in the classroom. So, that is one of the measures that have to be monitored throughout the entire process. You also have to have defined milestones. So, that means you've got to have SMART goals that can be measured, that are actionable, that can be attained. And then, you have to collect data based on those goals. And you have to have tools and rubrics that you're going to use to measure that. And you have to be taking and having feedback, consistent feedback, from the people that are being directly impacted by the turnaround plan. That includes your parents. So, we have, like, a panorama survey, we have surveys for our teachers, we have surveys for our instructional leaders, our principals, and administrators on the campus also. The next part is, the number six, is looking at performance management. So, not only having the plan, and not only having the SMART goals, not only having those milestone checks like BOY, MOY, and ELY, you also have to have, in your plan, how are you going to measure whether or not the plan that you put in place is actually working? And so, you have to go back and say, are we going to do it three times a year? Are we doing it on a monthly basis? Are we doing it on a bi-weekly basis or a quarterly basis? And you have to track that data in a tool that can be readily accessible to whoever wanted to ask to see it, as far as the state is concerned. And then, the last piece is what resources? And I would say that we were ecstatic that the board allowed us, when we came to you back in the spring of last year, allowed us to come to you with the plan for professional development, a plan for adopting a new textbook for math, a plan for doing ongoing support at the campuses. And all of those things, it's like, we have to have the resources, because to bring about change, you've got to spend a little money, right? And so, you have to have those resources there and available to support the turnaround that is going to occur.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, board. I think it's important for us to understand that these plans, remember, were posted, and we're in that feedback cycle right now. So, although these plans do have to be board adopted, just as a reminder, as we're receiving feedback, for example, the feedback we received this evening, we want to make sure that that is outlined in the plan. So, although we are planning on adopting these plans this evening, you may see minor changes made to that plan based on the feedback that we get. So, if you take a look at the next slide, there's two important things to note on this slide. The first one is, you will notice that Kirby, Metzger, and Park Village both have ratings that are indicated by an asterisk. That asterisk says that these campuses were forced accountability ratings. For example, if you take a look at Metzger 2025, the actual accountability rating was a D, but because of the 3D rule, that campus is actually marked as an F by TEA. That's what the asterisk indicates. So, we would be remiss if we didn't point that out. We're not talking about three straight earned Fs. We just want to be very clear that these were forced Fs for some of these campuses. The second thing to note is, and Dr. Fields mentioned this earlier, the last bullet on the slide kind of talks about that timeline, about how the accountability was rolled out to us. So, the reason I bring that to your attention is because we want to talk a little bit about strategic plans. Strategic plans were developed for each one of these campuses even before the official ratings were delivered to us, based on 2023, 2024, and 2025. These plans that we developed at the district level did impact instruction in a positive way. For example, you'll notice that Kirby has a forced F for '24 and a forced F for '25, which means the actual number indicated a D. But because of the 3D rule, these were forced F ratings, which indicates that the plans we did have in place for '24 and '25 did make an impact on instruction. The state of Texas now requires, with all the accountability being released at once, now we need to develop a more intentional and targeted plan for these four campuses. So, that kind of brings us to where we are today. I do want to also point out, the feedback that we're receiving, although it may be embedded in the plan, we're going to talk about one of those pieces tonight, I think the feedback we're receiving also tells us to flush that out in a little bit more detail, where someone who maybe is not in the educational setting day in and day out can read a plan, like a parent, and be able to understand exactly where that's outlined. Next thing we're going to talk about is instructional leadership. It's important for us to define what instructional leadership means in the educational world. A lot of time, when people think about instructional leadership, you're automatically thinking that's the campus principal. Here in Judson ISD, instructional leadership is made up of the campus principal, the assistant principals, the associate principal, the academic dean, academic trainers, academic coaches, even RTI teachers, department chairs, exemplar teachers, TIA-designated teachers. So, when we talk about instructional leadership, we just want to be really clear, we're not talking about one person that's since in the principal's seat. So, as we go through that, just kind of keep that component in mind. Are you okay if I do Park Village and Masters, and then we switch over? So, when we talk about instructional leadership changes that need to happen, we're going to talk about Park Village and Masters, for example. We did make the decision, as a district, to install two new principals into these campuses. Both are experienced principals, both have had experience in elementary. One of them is coming from a campus that has been A and B rated for a very long time. The other campus also showed gains from the campus she was at previously. So, we made the decision that because of their strong instructional leadership and the ability to put systems and structures in place, it felt like they were the right fit for that campus at that moment in time.
Kirby and Metzger are two of our middle schools that have traditionally, historically, have struggled. And so, one of the things that we went and decided to do as a district is that we did go ahead and keep the associate principal in that position, because it was already part of the grant, the Lasso grant, that that campus had received, and it was already part of the structure of the grant. So, we kept it, the old assistant principal moved on, so we kept the new associate principal. At that one, we kept the principal at that particular campus, because that campus did show gains for the last two years. It just wasn't enough gains to get them out of the rotation of the Fs that we were in, even though they made Ds, they were in a forced F, but they showed gains across the board. The other thing that we're going to be doing at Kirby Middle School, we had a meeting with TEA last week, and in the conversation with TEA, we were strongly encouraged to put a principal for Kirby Middle School proper, and then have a principal for Kirby Middle School STEM, in order for them to show, because both of those campuses, you have a TAP on one hand. So, the principal of the Kirby proper, which is the old Kirby Middle School, which is only eighth grade right now, because the other two grade levels are now under Kirby STEM. But Kirby STEM also has a targeted improvement plan that they have to address. And so, I'm sure Dr. Fields is going to be talking about that with the board later on this evening, to find out how we're going to do that without adding costs to what we already have in our budget. And at Metzger Middle School, that was a change in principal leadership at that particular school that occurred a little bit before the school year ended. And then, we were recently able to add an additional academic trainer to that campus from another campus in order to support mathematics. Because up until that point, the principal was not only just running the school, the principal was also acting as the math academic trainer and doing all the PLCs and doing all the meetings and professional development for the math team. So, we, you know, looking at the plan and looking at what we're supposed to be doing, we felt that there was a need to put an academic trainer that we were easily able to move from another campus and place them at that campus in order to support the math. And then, the last thing is that that campus already had an additional assistant principal at that campus. We left that principal in place, that person had already been at the campus for quite some time, and instead of moving them to another campus, that principal was already allocated to stay. The assistant principal was already allocated to stay at that particular campus. that particular campus. The other thing that we have to talk, Kristin, Dr. Saunders actually alluded to it, that it also goes beyond just the principal and assistant principals. The other thing that we have to look at are the teachers in the classroom, because at the end of the day, it's who's standing in front of the kids in every single classroom, every single day, delivering instruction, that has the greatest impact on student performance. And so we, along with the principals, work to make sure that we recruit, select, and retain fully-qualified educators. In addition to that, the principals were also, of these particular campuses, were also asked to look at their staff, and to look at which do you, look at multiple points of data, whether it's the STAR data, whether it was the T-test data, teacher certification, and make sure you strategically place teachers where they will have the most impact on your students for this upcoming school year. So we started that process, really, we started it in April, going into May, going into June, moving pieces around on the board to make sure that we were staffing it properly. So at Kirby Middle School, one of the things that's part of her school redesign plan that she submitted for the LASSO grant, it was that all of her students, because it was turning, it's going to be turning into, it is turning into, a STEM campus that all sixth graders needed to go through the STEM elective class in order to get the basis of what STEM is, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And then the other thing is to continue with her second year of her master schedule redesign that is specifically focused on math and reading, and adding additional time to those classes in order to make sure that students are receiving embedded support through the school day. Metzger, again, we're going to talk about adding in that academic trainer to assist with the instructional or the academic lift for the math teachers that are implementing Blue Bonnet for this year, and then also to look at her teaching schedules, because you know, in middle school, it's just like elementary, you can be a generalist, four through eight. That's one of the old certifications that are still floating around out there. And so a teacher could be certified in four core subjects, and you can move that teacher around if needed. So going back and looking at the data, looking at different data points, and making sure we're putting our strongest teachers with our kids that need the most support. And so that led to some movement between English and in math, from grade levels to other grade levels. So if you were showing that you were really strong in eighth grade math, but we saw a need for you in seventh grade math, we took you out of eighth grade math, moved you to seventh grade math.
So if you take a look at the elementary side, the first two bullets for both Park Village and Masters, those are things that took place June, July, and August, so long before students actually came onto the campus. The other pieces, where you can see specific teachers were moved to specific grade levels, that happened once the new principal arrived, and then we sat down as a team and looked at data, and started making some of those strategic moves within the campus. The idea now is, any strategic staffing changes that need to take place, we're trying to make sure that that happens within the campus. And just to be really clear, this is not just happening at these four campuses, this is something we're doing across Judson ISD. The next one we're going to talk about is positive school culture, and it goes a little bit back to what we were talking about, receiving feedback. One of the things you have to do in order to move instruction forward on your campus is to make sure that you have a positive school culture. That is students, staff, families, community, the whole nine yards. And so what that involves is requiring campuses, oh, I'm sorry, DT, requiring campuses to then put systems and structures in place to make sure that we do have a safe environment for students to be able to learn, that students do feel supported socially, emotionally, as well as academically. What we have done for the second year now in Judson ISD is we spend those first three days on every single campus, regardless of the grade level, making sure that we have a very clear understanding of classroom expectations across all contents, across all grades, and across all classrooms, whether it's pre-K to PE, or Algebra I to Chemistry, everyone understands the classroom expectations. That's the first step in creating that positive school culture, to ensure that we're addressing needs and addressing the needs of students. There was a comment about, are we addressing bullying within these turnaround plans? Thank you for the feedback, and yes, we are. As I stated earlier, what that means to us is, as we're refining these turnaround plans, we need to spell that out explicitly. People who are in the work know what SEL means, when we're talking about addressing the needs of students. Clearly, what that tells us is, we need to outline that for the community, so that they understand, we are well aware, if we don't have a positive school culture in place, if we're not making sure that every student feels safe and feels supported, we're never going to be able to move instruction forward.
We've already kind of touched on this a little bit, about the Blue Bonnet learning in math. That was a deliberate choice for us to go and change the math curriculum, based on the wealth of information we were getting from our STAR results, and also making sure that we were putting our alignment in place from kindergarten through Algebra I, that we were all talking the same language, and that is what Blue Bonnet learning in math was able to do for us, is put everybody on the same material, so we can have not only horizontal alignment, but also vertical alignment from kindergarten all the way up to ninth grade. In addition to that, the board, again, supported this endeavor by supporting our requests to make sure that we were able to do the professional development the way that we wanted and felt like it needed to be done. We could not wait until August to bring this to our teachers. We had to bring it to them before school let out in May. So once the board did the approval, and the board meeting in April, we would immediately put together professional development plan that went from May through August, and then it's continuing even today. We still have coaches going to our campuses, specifically in elementary and in middle school, because that is where we're seeing the concern. I know that we have spoken many a times with the board about the math performance in those two levels. And so they're receiving on the ground, boots on the ground, face-to-face, consistent coaching from Carnegie Math and Great Minds to support this implementation of Blue Bonnet learning in math. The last lever that is in the Effective Schools Framework really talks about effective instruction, and it talks about the fact that it doesn't do any good to put a plan together, to buy the materials, and do all of those things, if we're not making sure that it's getting down to the classroom, and getting down to the teacher who is standing in front of the kids, who's working with the kids in the classroom. And so whichever plan that we've made, you will see, you have seen in the Kappa, not in the Kappa, you have seen in the TAPS, I know it's like Kappa TAPS, tips and lips, you have seen in the TAP that we have specifically outlined professional development for our teachers, professional development for our principals, professional development for our academic trainers. Everybody that is going to have an impact on instruction is receiving ongoing professional development, so we can build the capacity of the people that are supporting our teachers in the classroom, but not only that, also building the capacity of our teachers that are working with our students every single day. And so when you look at that, and you look at what we're talking about, effective instruction, Kirby Middle School, you have the Blue Bonnet coaching by Carnegie, you have the multi-tiered student support in reading and in math, but you also have two things that are just to Kirby alone, that they have invested in, based on what their teacher data is telling them, and based on what their student data is telling them. They are working with an outside entity, School Empowerment Network, to receive additional coaching for their teachers, and they're also working with what we call NIMZ, the National Math and Science Initiative, to specifically target their science scores at that campus. And then everybody that's at the middle school level, specifically these campuses are receiving support throughout the week for the embedded PLC collaborative planning time to help teachers plan. At Metzger, they are still doing what we call ASVID. ASVID is a program that is built around research-based instructional strategies, and so it's advancement via individual determination. So they're teaching, explicitly teaching kids specific strategies that they can use and take across all four core subject areas. They are continuing with that, in addition to the Blue Bonnet coaching, and they're offering their ASVID through their LOTC classes, and they still also have the embedded collaborative planning in their PLC.
If you take a look at Park Village and Masters, I'm going to outline for you guys the pieces that are specific to just those campuses, because there's a lot of the components that are the same within these two. You'll notice that Park Village is engaging in a program called Papaya Tutoring. So, and we talked about this last week when we had our special board meeting. This takes place both virtually and face-to-face, with face-to-face being the bulk of the tutoring that's provided. Both of these campuses also redesigned their master schedule. We talked about this last week as well. What I mean by that is, every single elementary campus, in addition to Park Village and Masters, have built into their master schedule that individualized intervention time, WIN time, SOAR time, CUB time, whatever it's called, based on the campus, but that is embedded in every single master schedule, so that we can ensure those students are getting that individual time that they need with their teacher, based on whatever their instructional gaps are. I would also like to point out, Dr. Duhard Topin mentioned that Metzger does ASVID. Park Village does that as well, because both Metzger and Park Village are a blended learning academy, so both of them engage in those strategies as well.
And just hot off the press today, we are entering into an agreement with Region 20. They have what they're calling their Teacher Pathway Program. These are people that are going through Region 20 to earn their certifications to become teachers, and so they have launched a program where these individuals will be boots on the ground on our campuses, offering tutoring services at these four campuses in the areas of math, because that's where we feel we need them most. So they're going to be receiving training through Region 20, and then Region 20 is sending them out to us, and we're going to be pairing them up with students that need direct tutoring in small groups. That's going to give us an additional support with those, what we call those WIN times, what I need times, in our elementary schools, and in our middle schools will give us additional support in math in our MTSS period, so you can break the groups even to smaller groups, or to work. So we're really excited about this. We have done a lot of things through Region 20 over the past year, that we've kind of been, I don't want to say guinea pig, but we've kind of been willing to pilot some things for them, and to see, that's our DOI teachers. We partnered with them last year to get support for our DOI teachers to get their certification, and it is working. The people are getting certified, and we were one of the few districts that kind of joined in them when they came to us and approached that. So we're continuing looking for ways to go, not only within the district, but outside the district, to get additional support, to make sure our teachers are getting the level of support that they need in the classrooms, but also working directly with our kids. You can never have enough hands in a classroom, especially with the littles and in middle school kiddos. So I want to close with, this is where we are right now, so the TAP timeline. So TEA came back, it was initially, we had to have everything turned in on November the 14th. They have now extended that. So our deadline to submit our TAP plans for those four campuses is November the 21st. We're hoping to get it out to them way before then, because we want it back quickly, either with a rubber stamp or not. We're supposed to receive notification from TEA by January the 23rd, whether or not they're going to accept our plan. And if they do accept it, then we just continue what we've been doing right now, and continue with working and doing everything that we've been doing since last year, to make sure we can get these campuses turned around. If the plan is not accepted, if they reject the plan, then we have until March the 24th to resubmit a revised plan, if we have to, and we're not going to do that. We're going to make sure it's accepted the first time. And then if that plan is going to be accepted, TEA has until April the 8th to make a final decision. And so we're sitting here, and we're saying, like, what is this timeframe? It's like hurry up and turn the school around, but everything is spread out. It's a two-year plan. That's how TEA is looking at it, that they're giving you two years to turn it around. Kristin and I, in our conversations with the campuses that we're working with, is that we're going to get this done, and one year, we both have been on campuses where we had to turn it around in the year. We didn't have a choice. And so we believe that it can be done, and we're committed to making that happen. But as you can see, the timeline that's for the TAP has been extended by TEA. And so we are going to finish up with the feedback that we have gotten from our surveys, not only from the staff, but also the surveys that were submitted to the parents. We're having the principals go back in and adjust their plans based on the feedback that they've gotten, especially the feedback, even the feedback that we got this evening, and the public comments. And then we're going to tighten it up, do the final review of the draft, make sure everything is in there. We're talking to TEA frequently, and making sure that we're going to have everything in the plan for the first time we submit it. And then we're going to definitely try to get it out of our hands and into TEA hands way before November the 21st. We stand ready to answer any questions.
No, thank you, guys. I'll look down the line in a minute. But for the public, you may not see a lot of questions out of the board, because, leading up to this, thank you to the staff, because we had groups of one, two, or three go through these in excruciating detail a couple weeks ago, and then we came together as a board at a workshop, and went through all of this last week, again, also, which I think a lot of us liked that process, because we really got to dig into this with you guys, and really understand it, and then just be able to come present that to the public. So any board members with any questions or comments on that? And then the action on this won't be till the regular board meeting later on in the agenda tonight.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. T. I just wanted to say thank you for all the work you guys are putting into this. It seems like a solid plan. So again, I just wanted to say thank you for everything you guys have been doing, and just thank you to all the staff, the principals that were willing to make those swaps, and everybody that's just fully behind this and ready to run forward and just knock this out. So again, thank you so much for everything you guys do, and I look forward to a really good year.
Go ahead, Ms. Massey.
I really didn't have any comment, but Ms. Ryan kind of opened the door to it, when she said that we had met in groups. I was not a big fan of the meeting. Just for the record, colleagues, I think it's best that we meet as a group when we discuss board business, and we dive into it and have a long workshop, if necessary. But there were pieces that I missed from when the group met, and then when we met, and so just because it was stated, just my opinion, I think when we have future meetings, it might be better to have them with us collectively as a board, rather than split. So just my two cents. But excellent presentation. Thank you. I'm very confident in our turnaround plan. We did thoroughly discuss it in our last special meeting, and I've been telling folks, I am absolutely 100% confident this plan will succeed. So, thank you.
Awesome. There being no further business.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public comments. People are allowed to ask questions from the audience during a public hearing, so you won't need to give them that opportunity.
Okay. Anybody have any additional public comments that had not signed up ahead of time, or questions? Okay, seeing no hands, then we will adjourn this public hearing at 5:44 PM, and we are going to roll right into our regular board meeting. Yes, I have to take attendance and everything. And then we'll adjourn. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry. Okay. We usually don't have a public hearing before we do this, so we're working through how we're doing that. So this regular meeting of the Judson School Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 5:45 PM.
I was going to say, we can't call the meeting until 6:00?
No, the meeting was published to be right after the public hearing. So I'm very pleased you have taken the time to join us this evening. In compliance with State Government Code on open meetings, tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. These proceedings are being video and audio recorded and will become part of Judson's permanent legal record. In order that tape adequately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Once again, I extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire school board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. We have established a quorum, and I will call roll. Can we get back to the roll screen? Not yet, after close. Betty, do we have to do something on that screen, so we can see roll? Okay, let me proceed. Okay, everyone can mark their presence for the regular meeting. Okay, all seven members are present. So we are going to bop into a quick closed session, because we have our attorney here, so there's a couple of agenda items we're going to take care of, and I promise we're going to get back for student recognitions and everything else as quickly as possible. So the board will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. We are doing, we're going to do DE and F. So pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Attorney Consultation Regarding Legal Issues Related to Possible Approval of Written Contract for Administrators to Receive Financial Benefit for Providing Services Outside of Judson ISD. Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074, Consider and Discuss Possible Approval of Written Contract for Administrator to Receive a Financial Benefit for Providing Services Outside of Judson ISD. And pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Attorney Consultation Regarding Legal Issues Related to Senate Bill 12 Provisions Applicable to Grievance Policies. And we'll have a second closed session at the end of the meeting for agenda items A, B, and C that don't require an attorney. So the time is now 5:47, and we are in closed session.
At Judson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at judsonisd.org/vader. At Judson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at judsonisd.org/vader. At Judson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at judsonisd.org/vader.
The Board will now reconvene in open session. The time is 6:24 PM. No final action, decision, or vote was taken while the Board was in closed session. Okay, so now we'll move on to the invocation. Who's giving that tonight?
Mr. Macias, if we could all please stand. Mr. Macias, if you could lead us in prayer.
Yes, absolutely. Dear Lord, keep our community lifted throughout our district, its employees, our parents, our students, and help us keep our focus on why we are here. Purpose is to serve and make a future that will impact our next generation. And lastly, give us strength to remain faithful to that purpose and trust that with you, despite the challenges, the discouragement, the doubt, that we know through faith, we will prevail. In Jesus' name we pray.
Please remain scanning for the presentation of the United States.
And Texas Guard Cadet Captain Brandon Dominguez. Our pledge leader this evening is Sadie Shelton. Sadie is a 5th grade student from Park Village Blended Learning Academy. She is an A/B student and a member of the PVBLA Cheerleading Team, Safety Patrol, and Choir. Outside of school, she enjoys singing, dancing, and reading books. Thank you for leading us in the pledges, Sadie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what just stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Order colors. Center base. Forward march. Color going, hold. Ready, step. Hold. Post. Reset, arms. Order, arms. Forward, march. Forward, march.
You may be seated. We do have a certificate of appreciation for Ms. Sadie. If you can get back up there, you are going to take a picture with our board. There he is.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. We can give one more big round of applause for Sadie. Now, her proud parents are here and also her proud principal. Thank you so much, Sadie. And if we can, welcome back with a warm round of applause our Wagner Thunderbird JROTC for this evening. Very nice job. Thank you so much. We have one recognition this evening. It's a pretty special one, though. October is National Principal Appreciation Month, and on behalf of the Judson ISD, we want to take a moment to recognize our great leaders that lead our schools across the district. Coming up first from Candlewood STEM Academy, Rochelle Diaz. Converse Elementary, Miriam Huerta. Copper Fields Elementary, Amber Gonzalez. Crestview Elementary, Cynthia Valdez. ELOF Steam Academy, Tiffany McHugh. Escondido Elementary, Esmeralda Garza. Franz Leadership Academy, Carrie Savage-Egg. Fine Arts Academy at Olympia, Shannon George. Hartman Elementary, Lakeisha Valentine. Hopkins Elementary, Terry Combs. Masters Elementary, Alma Nietta. Miller's Point Elementary, Joshua Ellis. Park Village Blended Learning Academy, Kaon Bedford. Peshaw Elementary, Tricia Davila. Rolling Meadows Elementary, Sharisa Rhodes. Salinas Elementary, Michelle Allen. Selma Elementary, Dr. Melissa Martinez. Spring Meadows College Prep Academy, Sharon Valveras. Woodlake Elementary, Tanya Alarcon. Wertham Oaks Elementary, Dylan Stevens. Sibyllo Creek Middle School, Gregory Brower. Judson Middle School, Cheryl Hall. JSTEM Academy and Kitty Hawk Middle School, Scott Wilson. Metzger Middle School, Ebeneisha Davis. Woodlake Hills College Prep, John Griffin. Judson Care Academy, Elisardo Hernandez. Judson Early College Academy, Angelica Guzman Jeffrey. Veterans Memorial High School, Dr. Sue Aradondo. And Wagner High School, Bloss RC. Before the official group picture, before the official group picture, we just want to share a few words of appreciation. Every day, you lead with vision, heart, and unwavering commitment to ensuring students and staff have the tools they need to succeed. You hold high expectations and foster environments that encourage creativity and collaboration. We appreciate your leadership, your adaptability, and the countless ways you champion both learning and innovation in Judson ISD. To all of you principals, leaders up here, thank you for all that you do for our students, staff, and community of Judson. And that concludes our recognitions this evening.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is a time for citizens, staff, or students to provide their comments to the board. A meeting that is open to the public under the Act is one that the public is entitled to attend. However, the Act does not give the public a right to speak at such public meetings except to address their grievances through the proper channels. As a courtesy to the public, the Judson Independent School Board District Board of Trustees allows time for public comment. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of the meeting, so please sign up for public audience if you have comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and the topic of your comments must be written on the sign-in sheet prior to the start of the meeting, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to complete his or her comments. As the presiding officer, I will strictly enforce that time limit. Also, profanity, yelling, inappropriate, uncivil, or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. In accordance with Judson ISD Board Policy, BED Local, in the event your comment, in my judgment as presiding officer, constitutes a complaint or charge against an employee or officer, it will be necessary for me to interrupt you, ask you to stop, and direct you to seek resolution of your complaint through the district's appropriate formal grievance policy, DGBA for employee complaints, FNG for student or parent complaints, or GF for public complaints. By law, the Judson Independent School District Board of Trustees cannot lawfully discuss, deliberate, make comments, or make a decision on any matter raised in the public comment period, which is not specifically listed on the board agenda for this meeting. If you have any handouts to distribute to the board, please hand them to the secretary to the Board of Trustees next to the podium. With those cautions in mind, we will now be glad to hear general comments. All right, so first up, I have Robin Grimes, and next on deck will be Maria Garza.
Good evening, Dr. Fields, members of the superintendent's cabinet and Board of Trustees. My name is Robin Grimes, and I am a certified academic language therapist at Miller's Point Elementary. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again tonight and remind you that the Judson ISD dyslexia department is undeniably one of the best in Texas and is why I personally joined this team in the spring of 2016. You won't find a department of our caliber, one that is fully staffed with 37 certified academic language therapists or therapists in training. This is because Judson ISD set a precedent over 20 years ago to deliver the best instruction to our dyslexia students from the most qualified providers of dyslexia services. The caliber of our team is due to the rigorous two-year training program we undergo through the Scottish Rite Learning Center of South Texas, or Region 20, the 700 hours of extensive practicum hours we endure, the academic language therapist certification exam that we are expected to pass, the continuing education hours we must fulfill, and the comprehensive instruction that we deliver to our students. In addition to this, we are required to have a master's degree. These credentials set us apart from all other providers of dyslexia services and draw families and dyslexia therapists alike to Judson ISD. I hope you have taken the time to read all the emails sent to you over the last couple of days from the therapists across the district. We stand before you tonight asking that you invest in the staff you have in front of you, not an open position needing to be filled. We continue to remain loyal to Judson ISD because we pride ourselves on being highly trained while helping dyslexic children rewire the neural pathways in their brain in order to read. Having said that, we would like to ask that you make an amendment to the 2025-26 budget and grant a $2,600 stipend to each dyslexia therapist who is an accredited certified academic language therapist or cult. This stipend would be comparable to the market value of what surrounding districts pay their highly qualified dyslexia providers or cults for their continued education, certification, and extra job responsibilities. In the handouts that we gave to you guys, it does show the range in those values from 1,500 to 3,000 that other districts pay their cults. There is a huge difference between the credentials and training expectations between a dyslexia teacher or specialist and a certified academic language therapist. In other districts, teachers such as reading specialists, master reading teachers, general education teachers, and special education teachers are not required to hold a specific license or certification to provide dyslexia intervention to students. They must at a minimum have additional documented dyslexia training aligned to 19 TAC Section 74.28D and must deliver the instruction with fidelity. Even though many surrounding districts do not hold their providers of dyslexia services to the same standards as Judson ISD, they still grant a stipend to individuals who meet the absolute minimum training requirements. This typically entails a one-week training program, such as reading by design. These teachers have been made a priority by their districts, even with having the minimum requirements to teach dyslexia students, students with a neurological disorder. Those stipends range anywhere from $1,000 to $4,000 for having the minimum training requirements. Our hope is you make us and the 800-plus students that we currently serve a priority. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Okay, next up, Maria Garza, and on deck will be Mia Gomez.
Good evening, Dr. Fields, and members of the cabinet and Board of Trustees. My name is Mrs. Maria Garza. I'm a certified language therapist at Kitty Hawk Middle School, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. Last year, on December 19, 2024, we came before you to discuss the stipends and the job title for dyslexia therapists. The discussion was tabled so the board could review stipends district-wide for fairness. Since then, some positions have received the adjustments they requested, but dyslexia therapists were left out with no explanation. We are here tonight asking you to make our 800-plus dyslexic students across Judson ISD and the 37 therapists who serve them diligently a priority. Let me reiterate, we are not general education teachers reteaching lessons. We are not interventionists reinforcing skills. We are therapists, trained specialists who provide specially-designed instruction that literally help rewire how a dyslexic brain processes language and ultimately learns to read. Our students spend two or more years in therapy, learning to read in ways that come naturally to others. Through our rigorous training with Scottish Rite or Region 20, we guide them to unlock the world of reading, helping them move from decoding words to true comprehension, a skill that changes their future. So tonight, we ask, please don't table this again. Please don't wait for another budget cycle. Show our students and those who serve that we matter. By approving the 2,600 stipend of dyslexia therapists, you send a powerful message that Judson ISD values the life-changing work that we do every single day. Thank you for your time, your support, and your commitment to our students.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Okay, next up is Mia Gomez.
Yes. Hello. Good evening, members of the cabinet, board, and Dr. Fields. My name is Gabriela Gomez. I do go by Mia. I'm a certified academic language therapist at two middle schools, Kirby and Metzger. I am proud to say that I am part of the Judson ISD Dyslexia Department, and I specifically moved to Judson because I knew that this district was the only district that employs only certified academic language therapists to provide their dyslexia therapy. That resonated with me because I believe that this district recognizes our high-quality education and our certification. When I came to Judson, I was assigned as Teacher of Record in middle school, a class, and this class is called Reading Therapy. Judson assigned that class to me. This is not called reading intervention or any kind of MTSS. It's not a reading workshop. It is reading therapy because it is therapeutic. It is specifically designed instruction that can only be provided by somebody with a specialized training that we've previously outlined. My class is not graded because it's similar to speech therapy. Students don't have a grade because it's specialized reading therapy. We're rewiring that brain, creating those neural pathways to enable students to become proficient readers. We do have the best job because people, the women in my department and Oscar, have a unique privilege of experiencing the joy of when a student, a struggling student, cracks that code because of the therapy that we've provided. And working with middle school especially, when you've worked with these students that have struggled for a long time, and they finally feel successful, they feel that pride, they have that confidence because of the strategies that they were taught in this specialized reading therapy that we've provided. We celebrate those accomplishments with them. I'm standing before you today to ask you to make those students in our district a priority. I'm asking you to acknowledge our credentials and value us and our job responsibilities, our training, our commitment to our students, and compensate us fairly with a stipend. I ask that you follow through with this process that we began last year. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Okay, next up is Carolina Mansia, and Mr. Willis, you'll be after her.
The remarks I'm sharing tonight are on behalf of the Together for Judson Schools PAC, which is not affiliated with Judson ISD. We're a separate, community-led organization formed to help, educate, and inform voters about the importance of the VADER. Good evening, members of the board, district staff, and community members. My name is Carolina Mansia. My name is Carolina Mencia, and I'm proud to serve as the chair for the Together for Judson Schools PAC. I am also a proud product of Judson ISD, from ELOF Elementary to JSTEM Academy to Judson Early College Academy. I know firsthand what it means to grow through this district and to be supported by incredible teachers and staff. That is why I'm here tonight, because I want every student who comes after me to have the same opportunities that I did. Right now, Judson ISD faces a serious challenge. The state has underfunded schools for years while costs for fuel, insurance, materials, and salaries keep rising. The funding formula hasn't kept up with inflation, forcing districts to do more with less. The Vator gives our community a way to take back local control to generate the revenue needed to protect the quality of education Judson is known for. This isn't about politics. It's about people, our students, teachers, bus drivers, custodians, and everyone who makes our schools work. Judson's challenges aren't from mismanagement. They come from what's doing what's right, giving raises to retain great teachers and supporting students even without more state funding. Without the Vator, we're at risk for losing programs that make Judson special, JECCA, JSTEM, dual credit, fine arts, and athletics, even being at risk for school closures and consolidations. These aren't extras. They're what prepares students to lead and succeed. With the Vator, we can protect these programs, keep classrooms supported, and continue investing in people who make Judson great. And if the homestead exemption passes, many homeowners will actually see savings on their property taxes. So while we strengthen our schools, families still get financial relief. When our schools succeed, our whole community succeeds. Strong schools build strong neighborhoods, raise property values, and attract families and businesses. The Vator isn't just a funding measure, it's an investment in our future. Because of the opportunities I've had through ELOF, JSTEM, and JECCA, I've been able to move forward faster and build a future I am proud of. Every student deserves that same chance, and that's what this vote is about. Before I close, I invite everyone to our town hall tomorrow at 5:00 PM at Northeast Lakeview, where PACs from neighboring districts and Together for Judson Schools will discuss the importance of Vators. Visit TogetherForJudsonSchools.com for details. Passing the Vator isn't just a vote for school, it's a vote for our students, our staff, and the future of Judson ISD. Our teachers have stepped up, our students are stepping up. Now it's time for our community to step up too. Let's protect what makes Judson strong, our people, our programs, our pride. Please vote yes for the Vator. Together, we can keep Judson thriving for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mencia. All right. Mr. Willis, you are up next.
How do I follow up something like that?
Followed by, hold on, you will be followed by Mr. Abara. You are on next.
Okay, well, no, I have to follow up to that fantastic speech by the young lady. I'm going to talk much the same, just not as elegantly or gracefully. Vader, 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 folks. I'm preaching to the choir right here, and a lot of people in the room, people are here for one reason, because they care about this community, they care about the students, and they care about those students' education. That brings us all kinds of wonderful things, increased property values, better sense of community, all the things that make this place great. But if the Vator doesn't pass, if the Vator doesn't pass, what happens? Forty kids in my classroom? I can deal with 30, but I'm getting a little old for 30. Forty's not happening for me. The programs, gone, as the young lady was saying, it's not going to be there anymore. And if you think that not passing the Vator is going to make our school scores go up and encourage more people to come move into our district because of the great schools that are here and the great teachers that are here, you're wrong. So the people that are listening to this, maybe over the airwaves, or maybe some of the people in this room that are thinking about voting against the Vator, think again who you're punishing. I have plenty of issues with what this district does and does not do. And I come up here and speak about them, and I'm frank about it, and try to work towards a common good for that with love in my heart in the end. But if you're here and you're thinking against it and you're going to punish somebody, you're not punishing the teacher, you're not punishing the school, you're not punishing the board member, or whatever you think of them, you're punishing the students, you're punishing the community. This Vator is an unique opportunity. We are asking, and I'm asking, and the board is asking, and our community is asking, can you share in the savings that you're going to be saving, in the savings on your property tax because of the homestead exemption undoubtedly rising to $100,000 per house? If you can say those things and you're making these decisions for the best reasons there, we can fix the rest of it. We can work with this board, we can work with this administration, we can get the things done that need to be done to make this a B district or even an A district. But it does not start with not passing the Vator and having the property tax revert to 99 cents per hundred. We can't have it. We can't do it. And anybody that cares about this district and this community can't vote against this Vator. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Okay, next up is Mr. Nicholas Abara, and you'll be followed by Mr. Dylan Riggs.
Good evening, President Ryan, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Fields. My name is Dylan Riggs. I am the president of DECA.
And I'm Nicholas Abara.
We are both seniors at Veterans Memorial High School. I am here tonight to not only request the reading statement of the beloved club, DECA, but better more, to ask for your investment in our school's future economic leaders. The purpose of our speech tonight is twofold, to secure the board's approval and allow for Ms. Chancellor Chad Schugart to serve as its standing advisor.
Before diving in, let's briefly touch on what DECA is all about. DECA is a global student organization where over 297,000 students step up as leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. It is, in shorter words, a career pipeline. More specifically, many of the students seeking to restate this chapter are returning state qualifiers. This proves that we aren't just starting from scratch. We have a history of competitiveness and students ready to coach new members. Our goal is to use this success to significantly build campus awareness for DECA, ensuring students all across the grade levels gain access to these valuable business skills.
These scenarios build skills such as professional presentation, communication, critical thinking, and business analysis, and financial literacy and strategy. By bringing DECA back, we directly support the district's goal of enhancing college and career readiness, and we provide a competitive advantage that helps our students secure spots in top universities and land entry-level jobs. A successful DECA chapter requires an optimistic leader, and I am pleased to report we have found such. Mr. Chad Schugart, who is eager to step forward as our club's new advisor, he is fully committed to completing all the necessary district training and procedures, devoting all the necessary time to guide students to prepare for competitions, and ensuring the club is self-sufficient with a clear plan for fundraising to cover membership dues and whatever costs we may run into.
Furthermore, the club has gained significant student interest proven by a list of 15 students whom include Marco Basques, Vincent Trong, Derek Trong, Stacy Lam, Markus DeFrance, Jayden Russell, Tamile McDowell, Davion Neve, Fosso Crossro, Esma Martinez, Najab Adele, Andrew Young, Johann Jiang, and Raymond Shai.
All of the students named are ready to sign up and prepare for their events, and even better, most of the names mentioned above have a history of competing in similar clubs such as BPA and Skills USA at the state level. Allowing DECA to return is a high-return, low-cost investment for the district and will support our students with the skills, connections, and confidence to succeed in today's economy. Therefore, I respectfully request the school's affirmative vote tonight to officially recharter the DECA chapter at Veterans Memorial and allow Mr. Chad Schugart as the official club advisor. Thank you for your time tonight and your commitment to supporting student success. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our citizens' be heard tonight public comments. So, all right, let's, I know we've got some other visitors here waiting to speak to us, so should we roll right to the superintendent report? Because I see Mr.
You don't want to make the decisions on the close session?
Or may we, we'll roll them all at the end? We'll do all three of those actions.
Understood.
On those, so that way we can get some of our visitors out of here, so.
Understood. So first tonight, we have Mr. Westerman, who's going to come in and talk to us about a potential refunding opportunity for our bond series. And I'd like to note that on item E, we're asking that we pool that until November, so that one will be pooled. So, Mr. Westerman, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, Dr. Fields.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, President Ryan, members of the board, and Dr. Fields.
Right. That's it, right? Is it?
Okay, we're getting there. Bear with me. I'm Dwayne Westerman with Samco Capital. Also here is John Hall with Kentwood Hardin Bond Counsel, in case there are any questions on the legal side of things. So what we wanted to do tonight was to present to you an opportunity that the district will have to refund some of its outstanding debt. So right now, the district has four different issues that will become callable in February of 2026. And under tax law, we are able to currently refund those bonds on a tax-exempt basis within, starting within 90 days of that call date, so starting in November. These opportunities have two parts. Three of the bond issues are currently covered by the Permanent School Fund Guarantee, and those are the Series 2016A, 2016, and Series 2017. And these bonds would be eligible to receive the Permanent School Fund Guarantee, which if you haven't, aren't familiar with that, gives your bonds a AAA rating or the highest possible rating and helps us achieve the lowest possible interest cost. Our current scenarios for the potential savings from these bonds on this particular page show us that we have a potential savings of $8.7 million over the life of the issue. And on a net present value basis, it's $6,856,000. Now, as market changes, those savings could go up. They might change a little, but we're expecting rates should be relatively stable and hopefully go down, so that savings goes up a little bit more. Where the savings come from is the average coupon on the bonds that we're looking at refunding. The average coupon interest rate is 4.92%, and what we're looking at is projecting a rate of 3.12% as an effective rate for the refunding, potential refunding. This is a quick look at what that savings looks like. So in each of the years going forward, this bond's mature out through the year 2039, and right now, we're looking at a uniform savings structure which generates an annual savings of approximately $750,000 a year. And over the life of the term, that equals the $8,746,000. So that's the permanent school fund portion. There is one issue that was not permanent school fund guaranteed, and that was because that the bonds that were originally issued were in a time when the permanent school fund was, did not have capacity to cover bonds. And unfortunately, they have said that if you weren't covered the first time, you don't get it covered when you refinance it. So we can't add that into the permanent school fund issuances. So we would do it separately, but if we do it at the same time with the other issue, there creates efficiencies because you're doing two at the same time. So it's much smaller, and this is the Series 2016B. And what we're looking at here, we're only talking about $1,600,000 to $1,700,000, talking about a total savings of $148,500. But that is, on a present value basis, 6.36%. So what that looks like is a small amount of savings for the first several years at $5,000 a year, but then it jumps up to about $20,000 a year for the last six to seven years. And those go out to the year 2038. So what we're presenting to you is that this refunding is out there. We would come back to you in November for an action item, which would be a parameter order, which is something the district has done previously, and that parameter order approves the refunding subject to certain minimum parameters or minimum standards that we would meet, and then an authorized district official would sign off on it, and we wouldn't have to come back for board approval again. What we're looking at with the parameters that you would see in that order is a maximum principal amount on the PSF guaranteed issue of $367,345,000. Now, right now, not all of those bonds are creating savings. The issue we're looking at is around $100 million right now that can actually create savings. The bonds that don't create savings, we would leave out there, and if rates continue to go down, they would be eligible to be refunded at another date. So we'd always keep, continue to monitor those for future savings. So the maximum maturity is actually February 1 of 2046. The minimum net present value savings, 3% is kind of a standard that we use as a minimum amount we would want to see established before we would approve going forward with the refunding. And then there's a fourth one, a maximum effective interest rate. Now that, at 5.5%, wouldn't achieve savings, but obviously, the 3% minimum present value is the driving force on the parameters. And again, we can't issue more bonds than we're refunding, and we can't issue debt longer than what we're refunding. So we're not doing any of those things. For the non-PSF guaranteed issue, there's a total of $4,95,000 that's eligible. Maximum maturity is 2041, and again, we'd have the same 3% minimum net present value savings as our target. So be happy to answer any questions as we go through that. It's something we would continue to monitor. Obviously, we'll be back in November for your consideration on the actual approval of it, and in the meantime, we'll keep updating and watching where the numbers go and give you that information.
Go ahead, Ms. Stanford.
Is there a difference between refunding and refinancing? Is that a similar transaction?
It's our, in our bond world, refunding is a refinancing.
It's refinancing.
Yes.
So is there any downside at all to doing this?
We're locking in savings, so you can, I mean, if you think rates are going to go significantly lower, you can wait, but you play a waiting game of the bird in the hand and the bird in the bush. But that's kind of why we have the minimum net present value goal of 3%. If we're achieving that, and we're at 6% right now, you know, if we're getting there, that's a pretty significant savings, and so I don't believe there's any downside on that.
Okay. And where does the savings go?
So the savings goes into your debt service schedules going forward. So if we go back up, let's go to the larger one. So your payments going forward, like in 2027 or 2028, let's just say, the debt service payment as is currently scheduled is $52,962,000. If the refunding goes through at this projection, the new debt service in that year would be $52,200,000. So it's an amount less that you would have to pay, which does two things, helps cushion as far as what you're having to pay in levy as a tax rate on your INS rate, or it could provide some additional capacity if you get to a point of considering any future bond issues.
Ms. Canaya.
Thank you so much, Mr. Westerman. I appreciate that your firm always looks out for us and provides these opportunities. Things like this are what are able, enable us to lower our, let alone, lower our INS rating as we're proposing for the Vator. This also gives us funds that are unallocated interest and things at the end of our bond that allow us to do these extra projects, such as the stadiums at the high schools and some other things that are down the pipeline. So it's always a great opportunity, and for the public, this is kind of like refinancing your house. You know, a lower rate comes across, you jump on it. We're not extending the term of anything. We're not increasing our debt load, we're actually reducing it. So I really do appreciate your bringing us this. Thank you.
I might add, I didn't put this, we will provide it in a summary if this goes through in the future, but you might remember we have that savings history page. And so prior to this, consideration of this issue, the school district since 2004, through different refundings, refinancings, and defeasance, early defeasance of bonds, has saved over $102 million. So with this, potentially $8 million or more, we're going to up that number to $110 million that the district has been able to achieve in lowering debt service costs.
I don't see anything down that direction, so then I'll take it as my turn. Can we go to that last slide? Okay, that one. So what Ms. Canaya just said, I just wanted to make sure that was true, that is this keep the same end date of the bonds?
Yes.
Not taking my 23-year, seven years into my 30-year mortgage and refinancing out another 30 years, right?
That's correct. So on the parameter, it says 20, for the top one, it says 2046, and that's the longest maturity of the longest bond that's eligible to be called. If, in the scenario we showed you, those longest ones aren't working right now, and the longest maturity that we could refund is, I believe, 2039. and the longest maturity that we could refund is, I believe, 2039, we could only go to 2039. So we would maintain the length or shorter of any debt that's refunded.
Okay, great. And I think Ms. Canoia also mentioned, we just lowered our INS rate two cents. So it looks like, from that slide you were showing before, all of our annual payments are projected to be lower. So our current, the new INS rate that we just set is going to be sufficient to cover all of our payments through 2046, what if we don't do anything else right now?
It should, we will work with the administration to look at the 2026 year. A lot of, many times when we structure it, we leave, we try to leave the current year we're in the middle of as status quo and not create savings. We'll look at again at how the tax collections are coming, if we need to try to have some of the savings occur in the current year to help with that lowering of the tax rate. We can adjust and do that. But yes, the rest of them will be coming down to help you be able to maintain that.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because we bring it in less in January because we lowered the rate two cents. So I just want to make sure we're going to be okay to make all the payments under, if we get these new schedules in place. How much is the, you know, how much is the risk? What's the market saying? I mean, again, it's always, when you, because once you do this, like, you're locked for a while, right? There's, this isn't like, wait six months on your mortgage and you can refinance again.
So normally, like, these issues were done in 2016 and 17. Normally, the call feature or that prepayment option is generally nine to 10 years out. So we would have to wait another nine to 10 years to have another opportunity to do this. So you're correct on that front. Right now, we're looking at yields that would range from the 2.35% in the early year out to 3.68% in the longer year. So that, I believe I had, the effective rate on the new issue for the PSF guaranteed was 3.12. So that's the effective rate of all those rates of the different maturities combined.
Okay. And we're safely betting that that's probably as good as it's maybe going to get in the next few years? I mean, obviously, safely, right? We can't predict anything, obviously.
We can make no promises or guarantees.
Pretty good, pretty good with us moving forward, that that's a solid bird in the hand.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Those are the questions that I had.
I'd like to make a statement on something that was said. We checked with Mr. Westerman before we brought this recommendation, before Mr. Kingman even made the recommendation to us to bring to the board. And to Ms. Canoia's point, it was part of the catalyst on why we brought up the two cents. Because based on what they were giving us back, based on checking with John Hall, and again, Tony's recommendation, it was stated that this was the best.
And knowing we had a refunding coming.
And the fund balance as well.
Yes, you are absolutely correct, Dr. Field. So the deficit for the INS on purpose is around $2 million, and that $700,000 that you will see next year would help to lower it to 1.3 if the property value stayed the same. However, you know, the property value should go up every single year. So two years from now, we will basically get to avoid the revenue.
Back up to zero?
Exactly, exactly. That's the whole game plan on the two cent decrease.
Okay, yeah. No, and it's a very healthy fund balance in debt service. So I don't disagree that that's a nice cushion that we have sitting there. And this won't impact that. It'll only make it better.
And I would like to make one more comment. Dwayne, if you go down to the last slide, the minimum net present value saving is at 3% right now to create flexibility for us to be able to go on the market. On the presentation, the net present value is around 6%. So I would like us to try our very best to try to get to that 6%.
Absolutely, absolutely. I wouldn't have shown you that 6% if I didn't feel like, okay, we had a chance to get there. But again, the market, if something crazy happens in the market and rates go back up, but the other side to that is, if the market goes the other direction, we don't do, even if you've approved it, we don't do anything. You're not out any costs. It's kind of a no lose on that part of it. If it happens, we make it happen. We achieve the savings. If it can't happen, we just don't do it.
Yeah, for the, because three of the new, three of the board members, this will be their first refunding. It's still confusing, even though I've been through it at least once type thing. So he'll come back to us next board meeting, and we'll give him certain, like he said, parameters. And that'll give him the authorization, okay, between this interest rate and this interest rate and all these numbers, that'll give him the permission to go out and actually execute it within that. So he's not going to go out and refinance this thing at 6% or 7%, right? He's going to have very specific rules that we're going to approve for him to go out and then refinance. And then he's just going to shop the market, like, hanging out, hitting refresh on interest rates and talking to lots of people who sell these bonds. And he'll have a window there, right? Do we give you like a 90-day window?
We will have a team to underwrite the bonds and go out. And then that would, we would be flexible to work. That's the beauty of the parameter order. It gives us the flexibility to try to, you know, avoid bad times in the market or good times and hit, try to hopefully hit the best time.
Yeah.
Dwayne, are you confident it's going to be next month, or it may be a little bit further out than that?
Well, we'll, we will definitely, I think Mr. Hall has already prepared the draft order, so we can definitely have that on the agenda next month. I think we're going to be prepared to execute quickly thereafter.
Understood.
But we will also kind of view the market and decide whether that's appropriate or not. And obviously, we'll be in contact with you to let you know what our thoughts are on that.
Will it be another one of those all-day events where you guys go in? I mean, I'm only asking because it's a great opportunity for us to get some of our kids in there to kind of watch it as it happens. It's a pretty eventful exercise, and it really allows some of our students at the high school to get a really good understanding of how the market works.
We can look into that possibility.
I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions for the board? Go ahead, Ms. Stanford.
So are we automatically delayed for a month? You can't take any action until November?
It's not on the agenda for action tonight, so.
Correct. And we can't until 90 days.
I'll defer to John on that.
90 days out, right, as they're released.
Well, and I think part of the reason that we're waiting till the meeting in November is to see what happens with the VADER election.
Understood.
So because one is really how you structure the refunding is contingent upon what happens with the VADER. That gets you, gives you the maximum use out of that refunding. So that's.
Either way, if it passes or fails, we get?
If you still have the benefit of the refunding, yes. I just think that the circumstances and the scenarios and the considerations are different depending upon what happens. Or at least those possibilities are out there. So, you know, the other thing I'll add, just because it seemed like there were some questions about whys, which I think are real important. The Permanent School Fund will not allow you to extend your debt beyond its current maximum maturity date. So there's that built-in mechanism as well to make sure that we're not taking a 23-year mortgage and just putting it out to 30 and, you know, keeping it out there longer. The other thing that I think is real helpful is, you know, in this case where you've got nearly, you know, $367 million of bonds that could be refunded, the market's only accommodating to where we can get a portion of them. The refunding order is good for a year, plus closing days. So even if we only do 100 initially, and let's say in February, there's some change in the market that makes the bonds that we couldn't do here likely in December, we could do those there. We can get back in the market as very quickly, and it allows us to be flexible, adroit, so we can capture those savings. So that's, to me, the beauty of the parameter order, is it just allows you to work as quickly and as efficiently as possible, but also within the guideposts that everybody is looking to achieve.
Thank you.
They're essentially going to sell off our debt in parcels.
Likely this time.
Makes it a little easier for people to understand it's not one big chunk.
And Dwayne can probably add some perspective here. You know, when we, I think probably when he looked at this a couple months ago where rates were, just kind of assuming that if rates stayed the same, could we be doing this? I don't think it was, the savings were not as.
No, I think they were up in the 5s.
Yeah, it was very challenging to get any type of savings. So we're thankful that the market has rallied, and, you know, interest rates have gone down a bit. You know, the other question that comes up, and Dwayne, you may speak to this, is someone's asked, why 3% savings is the threshold? Yeah, I think there's a national group called the National Federation of Municipal Analysts. And, you know, for those communities where they create debt policies, like City Chicago, City Dallas, New York, there's a conventional wisdom that if you're able to achieve 3% on a current refunding basis, that's statistically, believe it or not, that's really good. And so that's why that benchmark is there. It's not just that, you know, we decided to pick a number and this is what we're going to go with. It's academically considered a good starting point for savings. Certainly, you want to get 6, 10, as much as you can. But it's not just a number that is picked out just randomly. Yeah, there's some thought and science and math behind it.
Thank you.
All right. If no other questions, thank you, gentlemen. I know it's, this is, this is a whole new next level math when you're doing this stuff. So we appreciate you doing a lot of that for us. Okay.
Mr. West, Mr. Westman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just out of curiosity, how many times have we done this, in, say, the last 10 years? It's not critical. Just, it's a bunch. I heard my colleagues.
10 or 11 times.
Yeah, it's been a while, and it's been very effective for us. So thank you as well.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
You want to move on to bond construction?
Bond construction and then the staffing and vacancy report should be rather, rather quick. So, Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to say the ribbon-cutting ceremony went well last week. Other than that, I stand ready for any questions.
I'm sorry. I did have a couple of questions because my Wednesday was Tuesday in my brain, and I missed bond oversight. I don't like short weeks. So for the gym, air conditioning. So which schools are we still waiting on that are not operational yet? I know we have most of them operational.
Most of the gyms are operational. They're doing the testing and balancing on a few of them. I know over at Woodlake Hills Middle School, we're waiting on a part for the girls' gym. One unit is running, but we do have a couple of units in that gym. And so one of the units needs a part, and so we're waiting on that part. It's been ordered and we're waiting on it. But the air is running in the gym.
Okay, so we should be getting to substantial completion on that overall project here?
Yes, ma'am.
Hopefully, real soon? Okay. I've heard it's freezing in some of our gyms, which is a good thing.
Want to hear no complaint.
Wearing sweatshirts in the gyms, so that's amazing. For the Network Operations Center, I saw that it's out for bid right now. And on the bid pages, it's got it out at like $4.2 million, but we only have like $3 million budgeted for that whole project. So is that ended up being a much more extensive project than we had budgeted for? I guess also concerned because we haven't done a master facilities plan yet about where everything's going to land. So are we, I guess, what's going on with the NOC?
And what project was that exactly?
The NOC, the Network Operations Center.
And you're saying it's up to 4.?
Yeah. What was out, what's out on our website is 4.2 million in construction costs plus design. But we only budgeted like $3 million for that whole project, for the construction portion, not your technology part.
And I would defer to Dr. Gosh, but were there funds left over from another project that could be converted over?
So the construction of the actual building in the warehouse is not part of my proposition. The equipment and the actual building of the NOC, I have those funds. And so those have not been utilized yet out of Proposition A. The actual building of the NOC is part of Proposition B, which I'll have to, I'll have to go back to Mr. Brooks on that one because it's two separate projects. So there's the actual, I guess, shell of the building that will be built as far as the addition to the J-Tech facility and then the change and the addition to the warehouse that is there after that. Then I do have a section within Proposition A for the NOC equipment and all of the wiring, excuse me, and those components, and those are being priced out as well.
Yeah, and you may not have the answer to that, or maybe you do.
Well, I mean, the quick answer is, is I'm sure that we probably have funds available in unallocated interest for that project. Correct.
Yeah, so when you, the proposal, I assume, will come next month because it's out for bid right now. So if we can just make sure we know where those, because we've been dipping into some unallocated. I just want to make sure we're keeping it running total of that.
If we went out and we say that it was budgeted at 3.5 and you guys went up to 4 point, you were going to take the funds from where?
From the same.
Unallocated interest.
Unallocated interest?
Yes.
Okay. And are the funds available in unallocated interest for that bond? Okay.
Let's see what else I have on this. Playgrounds, do we, as I drive around district, I'm seeing a lot of things being torn up. So we're making progress, but do we know, you know, we were hoping to have those done by fall, which it is. Do we have a new completion date on the playgrounds? Have they, as the guys were putting it in, give us an idea?
The new completion date is going to be probably in November.
November, okay. I'm sure the kids are watching out the window, getting excited that there will be some new playgrounds on some of those.
What was the original completion date?
It was fall.
November?
So, for the security vestibules, I know we approved that back in the July board meeting, but the update says we're still in contract negotiations.
I think it was for the last few, is it contract negotiation or, okay. It was for the last few that we had to send through, the big ones?
You just signed it today.
Right.
Okay.
The contract has been signed.
All right, so we're getting ready to proceed on those. Okay, I just want to make sure that those were going, and we want to get those going whenever we can. Because obviously, scheduling during the school year is going to be challenging on some of those areas. And.
And they're big ones. I mean, we're talking about Wagner.
Correct. Yes, that's, can't really tear up the front of Wagner in the middle of the school year. That one's not going to work. And the last one I had is, on a, 2016 bond had the Wagner marquee listed as not started yet. Are we ordering that? Is there a holdup on the Wagner marquee? That was like one of the 2016 ones that was pending to start.
Yes, ma'am. We decided to hold off on that one and wait to do all three high schools at the same time.
Okay. All right, sorry. That was all I had on bond construction, and I promise I'll try to make the next bond oversight so I can ask those in advance. Any other questions on bond projects?
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Mercedes.
Dr. Fields.
Yes, sir.
This also came to my attention just recently when I spoke to some parents at Converse Elementary. So there were a number of projects that were under review for that campus. So I'm hoping that I can request some information on what those updates might be. I'm talking about utilizing potential bond funds to address those projects. We also had an opportunity to have legal funds applied to some years ago. So just want to get a sort of a recap on where that is and what may have happened with those projects.
I would defer to the Facilities Department. I just know that the legal funds that were acquired for that project did not even come close to meeting what the responsibilities were that were identified and needed to be corrected. Now, some of those were from 2016. And I know that we applied some 2022 bond towards it as well. So I know right now, we're looking for like a geo-specialist to go in and say, where do we need to focus on, or have we already decided on what we need to do first?
This is Converse Elementary?
Yes.
Yeah, we're already under construction for all the projects, 2016 and 2022.
But we have all the projects that we're going to do going forward identified to move forward?
For that campus, yes. For the campus, absolutely, yes.
And that would be helpful just to explain to community members around the Converse, and like I said, especially there. I know that we've done things, and I recognize, and I told the parents I spoke with, that we could only do so much, that the legal funds weren't truly enough to repair. But I thought we prioritized, and so.
We did in 2022, we come back.
I want to be able to convey that message, but also just to reiterate that on record. So that's our position.
Now, will those two be wrapped together then, the 16 and the 22 together?
Yes.
As we move forward? That way, we'd be able to close out 16 as we move forward with the projects?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Mercedes, on page three of that report, they list on here exactly all of those things. There's like an actual list of underfloor playgrounds, blah, 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 type thing on there. And I want to say it was like a $12 million, like, there was a lot of money in 2022 bond on top of the 2016 to do the whole, most of the kit and caboodle type thing. So, but yeah, we worked with Vandy before. They've done a great, did a great job over at Veterans, so.
Well, and also, it doesn't include completed projects. And so I just probably want to get a sense of what was taken, because this lawsuit was brought in 2017, and those funds were allocated shortly thereafter, maybe 2018, 2019. So just get a sense of what that was, because that wouldn't have appeared on the bond. So just get a sense of what that was because that wouldn't have appeared on the bond projects, which again, that's good, but just want to kind of close that and just get a better sense of where that went. Thank you.
I've not seen any other questions on that. Thank you, gentlemen. And again, great job. Beautiful schools. Beautiful, beautiful schools. So thank you to the whole facilities department. It was nice to see the final, final versions of those that were ribbon cutting. So, all right, staffing?
Yes, ma'am. We delivered the staffing report. We stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on staffing? I don't see any. All right. Intruder detection?
We had a few inspections for intruder detection. No, what do they call it? No finding, so we are good to go there. Nope.
Okay, great. And as Dr. Field says, we said, we are going to defer 6E, the targeted improvement plans, to the November meeting because there was a delay in the due date of those to TEA. And then those of us who want to sit down and go through those in more detail with you, we'll set that up.
Yes, ma'am.
So we can go with the same level of detail as the turnaround plans and make sure we understand what we can expect to see on each of those campuses. But thank you to all the principals who have been working hard with district staff too, trying to put all these plans together and getting them all, get documented all the amazing things that you guys are doing. So, all right, we can move on to consent. So we are, so Q is those targeted improvement plans that we're not going to do till November?
Correct.
So we're going to pull Q off of there for right now.
Thank you.
Administratively. Everyone got a copy of the minutes for A, so I'm leaving those on there unless anybody pulls those. And I will go down the line and see what else people need to pull from agenda items. Mr. Messias, anything for you?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Jones?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Lee?
No.
Mrs. Canoyer?
No.
Ms. Stanford?
C, letter C.
Hi.
And O.
Okay. Mrs. Potteens?
No.
All right. And I had questions on D as in dog and N as in November. All right. So I will go read the letters of the alphabet as clear as I can for Ms. Betty when we do this on the thing. So I move that we approve the consent agenda items. A, B, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, P, R, S, T, U, V, X. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Ms. Potteet. I didn't miss anybody's letters or miss any letters up, right? Okay. And I will move, oops, hold on. Get this ready. Okay. And you can vote on the consent. Sorry. Okay. Consent agenda as listed passes 7 to 0. Okay. Now we are going to go back to 7C. Ms. Stanford, you pulled that agenda item.
Yeah. So this is a budget amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just clarifying to make sure I'm catching everything. So we're reducing the deficit in this amendment? Is that correct?
I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Kingman and Ms. Davis speak on it, but you are absolutely correct. There are some, there's quite a few revenue items on here that would amend the budget. And so, Mr. Kingman, would that affect the deficit as we move forward?
Yes. So basically, for the budget amendment for this month, we are doing two things. We are increasing the revenue and also decreasing the expenditure for the operating budget at the same time. And we also increase a transfer out for the self-funded insurance fund. So for the revenue, we received the result from the 2024 property value study audit, basically saying that the local share should be less, meaning the state's share should be more for the 2024. For that reason, the state should give us 1.7 million more. So that's the first line of the revenue, which basically the majority of the adjustment for the revenue, the second piece of it, related to the teacher retention allotment. In July, we passed an amendment to increase the expenditure budget. And as we know, the teacher retention allotment, it basically is a pass through, right? Whatever we get, we give to the teacher. So if we increase the salary for the teacher by 6.4 million, meaning that we have to increase the revenue by the same amount. And the budgeted amount for the teacher retention allotment in the original budget was 5.5. So it's mean that we have to match up what we increase in the expenditure. So that also the second piece of the revenue. The last one, basically, a TEA communicate with us that the teacher who get paid out the federal grant for the teacher retention allotment, that particular small portion of it will need to go out of the general fund. So we also will have to pay for the teacher retention allotment to those teachers. So it is revenue to reflect the fact that we will receive the funding for that also. In term of the expenditures, looking at the payroll for September and due to the fact that we has freeze non-essential hiring, the payroll for September is basically is the same amount that we pay last year, even with the raises and, you know, with the teacher retention allotment back in. So that mean that looking at what we have left for the rest of the year, we confident that we will save around 2.5 million for the payroll alone. However, the last piece I would like to talk about is the self-funded insurance fund. The board approved a transfer out of 4.8 million. However, looking at the cash that we have on hand right now, we don't think that we have enough cash to be able to get all the way to December, based on the fact that the claims has not been slowed down at all. It's still coming in strong. And we already addressed the problem already. We already switched to a full insure, but that plan doesn't start until January 1st. So we still have a couple of months to go through and we do believe that we do need another injection of cash to be able to go through the end of December. Now, we do have about 1 million rebate from the insurance that will help us, but we do think that the 2 million that we propose to transfer out is an appropriate amount for us to be able to last until the end of December with that million from the rebate already accounted for, meaning that from now until December, we probably need about 3 million to get through the rest of the year.
And this 2 million would put us there?
Exactly.
Now, what about the residual after the 1st? You know what I'm saying? If people are still using the self-funded up until December, those bills won't really come in until January, February?
You are correct. So we still have a few pending case for the maximum stop loss.
Yes, sir.
And with that, you know, we should be able to get there. Now, obviously, I can't predict this
Understand.
Number of claims going to come in and the amount, but by December, we will take another look at it. And if at that time, the cash amount is not there, then, you know, we can bring back the conversation. But right, right now, the projection is with the 3 million that we about to get, it will be able to get us to the end of the plan.
Thank you, Tony.
Yes, sir.
So as of today, our deficit is sitting at which number?
So the operating deficit is at 27.5, meaning the recurring deficit is 27.5. However, for this particular year, the deficit is 34.3 million.
Okay.
And really, the reduction in the deficit mainly come from the revenue increase, right? Because for this particular years, you know, even though we saved 2.5 million in the operating budget, we use that 2 million to transfer to the one-time expenditure anyway. So that is the reason why, you know, the main reason for the reduction in deficit for this year come from the revenue.
And just lastly, do you have the total amount of cuts that we ended up with, that we ended up with from the board after all that work we did? What did we finally end up at? What we cut?
Yes, ma'am. I do have the list in front of me and that number is roughly 10 million. And that 10 million refer back to the beginning of the process when we built the budget, right?
Right.
So some highlight I'd be able to point out is basically the eliminate of pre-K3 and then the eliminate, the elimination of district level vacant position and also the student to teacher racial adjustment. Those are the big items that drive the reduction that I just mentioned of 10 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Kingman?
Yes.
If the Vader approved, how would that affect the deficit?
So if the Vader approved, it will bring in roughly 21 millions for the district. So is that 21 million really should compare to the $27 million deficit because the one time is going to go away after the 25, 26, right? So the 27 be basically the recurring deficit. So 27 minus 21 would put the deficit is at 6.5 million.
Thank you.
Are you good, Ms. Stanford?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, you looked like you were still thinking. I wanted to make sure. Ms. Canoyer?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stanford, for pulling this out because it gives me a chance to address a narrative that's out there that the board hasn't done anything to reduce the deficit, that we're just sitting here and waiting for a Vader to pass and then we're good. But that's not true. We've been working all along, making sure that we are working on rightsizing, making sure that we are looking at positions, making sure that we are cutting wherever we can. We understand that there is a deficit and we have been working really hard to overcome that. There, you know, I think a lot of the press out there is saying that we're a $47 million deficit and that it's $20 million away from where we actually are. So I wanted to be sure and highlight that. Thank you.
I had written some questions down too. I guess, first, I'd love to see that $10 million list because, yeah, I think some of the other lists we had of what we had cut and cut from expenses too, because if you cut a vacant position, it wasn't an expense in the first place. So if you could send that to the board in the Friday notes, that would be
Just point of correction. It was budgeted for. If it's budgeted for, then it's
Correct. Oh, yeah. No, no, no. We're looking at reducing our expenses, not just our actual expenses each year, I think. So question on the $1 million rebate from insurance. I thought that was already earmarked to pay for next level urgent care last year, for next year, which is going to cost $1 million.
So the rebate that I was talking about come from the stop loss rebate. It wasn't the same rebate that
Okay. So there's a difference.
Yes, that's two different
Different million dollars. You are correct. It just happened to be similar dollar.
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to make sure we weren't spending that money in two places.
Yes.
Okay. So we're still getting a million from somewhere else that's going to cover the first year
Yes, the stop loss of it.
Of next level
That's correct.
Urgent care. Okay. Because that's something we have promised that the employees really like that service. So want to make sure that they were getting that. Are they providing any, is Lucid providing any assistance trying to predict these legacy claims? Because these things can go on for six months afterwards. And so how long is this putting money into this going to continue on because of the lag time in insurance claims coming in because there's always lag?
I don't want to hazard a guess. I can tell you that we've had some predictions out there. We thought that once the school year started, we'd see a decrease in the number of people going in and getting seen. But we haven't seen that decrease that we had anticipated. So that's why we find ourselves in a situation where we're needing to increase that amount as we make it to the end of the year. And then with, I mean, just historically, in my experience with human resources, with November, Thanksgiving coming up, and then the two weeks in December, people often find time to go get a checkup because in the education world, you're working all the way through. So then when you get a break, you like to go in and get that nagging whatever it was kind of taken care of. So I can see that pickup as well.
Yeah. See, that effect is what I'm worried about because the out-of-pockets and the deductibles and everything on the new insurance are going up astronomically, right? So if I got a knee surgery or whatever I have to have, I'd rather do it now under my $1,000 max out-of-pocket versus my $6,000 max out-of-pocket. So that's what I'm stressed with Lucid trying to help us predict what that surge may be before people have to switch over to the new plans and have much, much higher out-of-pocket costs. And so that this, these numbers might not be, this might not be the end of that.
I'd ask Dr. Taganaw, are they going up astronomically or are they going to be?
The out-of-pocket expenses are going up, but we tried to make plans that were very similar to the ones that we have now so that the monthly contributions from the employees stayed about the same. So when you're making adjustments in one area, you have to adjust for the other. But with the self-funded insurance plans, it's very difficult to predict what the claims are going to be like, which is one of the reasons why we worked so hard to kind of come off of that because there's less risk with a fully funded plan. And so I'm sure Lucid or, you know, they can provide a little bit of information, but there's no way that we could hold them to that
To accurately predict it, right.
Because you cannot, you don't know.
Yeah. No, I just wasn't sure being in the, whether Brown and Brown mean in the industry and Lucid, you know, based on historical information, obviously, we only know us, but they know a lot of other people to get an idea of how much more this may end up being. So, yeah, if you can keep us updated
Understood.
You know, as we go through this, because now on December 31st.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess the other concerns I had on there is reducing our budget on salary because I've gone through three end of fiscal year cycles now on the board. And every June 27th or so, we get this huge budget amendment that we underbudgeted for salary, and now we're doing a last-minute budget amendment because we're overspent. So I am, it stresses me out a little bit. Makes me a little uncomfortable to reduce some of those budgeted amounts and then, and then to find out in June. So I'm going to, I'm going to trust your projections, but I just, I'm a little queasy about that.
So, yeah, I do have a comment. I guess I forgot to mention that last year, the deficit, based on what we about to present to the board next month, is around 14 millions with 7 million is the one-time cost. So the operating deficit for last year is only 7 million. Now, it's part of it because we have the disaster pennies last year, right? But as you can see, the actual and the budgeted deficit have a gap. And the reason that we usually bring the amendment in June is because we do not want to overspend per function, right? Because it's going to affect the first rating.
Oh, yeah. No, I get the little fluff bump up, but we've brought actual, like, oh my gosh, like, we actually need the, like, we actually spent the money that was in some of the budget amendments. So I guess I just, I worry. And so hopefully, we're doing great forecasting and getting all of that in so that we don't have that again. And then I guess my last thing I had written down was just that I'm concerned that we're adjusting our expenses down, but we have not adjusted our revenue down due to our enrollment. I know you guys are still calculating, but again, every student we lose, because Mo Casey said, we get about 10,000 in funding per student from all of our different sources. So if we are short 100 students, 200 students, 300 students, 400 students, right? That starts to add up to the millions and millions of dollars. So this, I'm afraid this may not be accurate if we have not decreased our revenue. And also to point out that that 2.8 million increase in revenue, that's a one-time. That's a one-and-done also. That is not a recurring. We don't, that was a property value audit one-time thing. That's not a permanent increase in our revenue. It's just kind of a one-time. So as soon as we can, you know, we're through a bunch of six weeks of ADA or like at least through the first six weeks of ADA. So it'd be nice to see what those new revenue projections are based on our actual current enrollment and current ADA trends to see how much of a hit that's going to be to our how much of a hit that's going to be to our revenue, and see a true budget deficit for this year.
Yeah, so the snapshot is coming up, so we were waiting for that particularly important number and data.
But I think snapshot doesn't have anything to do with it.
That's the number you go with.
You are correct, but just to making sure that we present the same way that we always present in terms of the enrollment, we would like to wait for that number to present that. But you are correct, like, you know, the ADA is basically every day, right? And the first six week has ended, and, you know, the second six week is coming up in November, and the third six week is basically the first semester, right? So I think with more data, we'll be able to present a more accurate number of the enrollment. But, yes, the trends look like that we will have less students than last year, and less ADA than last fiscal year.
Yeah, at different times, at the end of every six weeks, we would get a new revenue projection from Mo Casey...
That's correct.
After we closed out each PMS six-week projection.
That's correct.
So I hadn't seen one of those yet, because you're right. I don't, I don't care about enrollment from a finance standpoint, because that's not how we're funded. So since the ADA started on day one, I mean, every kid who wasn't there on day one, we didn't get paid for them on day one. Everybody wasn't there on day two, we didn't get paid on day two. So snapshot pertains to academics, and who counts for STAR test, but ADA and PMS is what drives our finance revenues, so. Okay, those are the only questions that I had. Ms. Jones, I guess you're up next.
I had a question with the insurance. I have two. What we're paying per month in the insurance on the claims, is that a steady number, or is it jumping around drastically?
So in June of 2025 is 4.9 million per month, July is 3.7, August is 2.8, September is 2.8. And just to make a comparison, right, in May, which is last fiscal year, is 2.1, April is 2 million. So as you can see, like, we should see it going down by 90,000 or 800,000 per month, but it doesn't look like it is going down compared to historical data. Like, you know, for example, August should be around 2 million, right? Because that's the standard. It shouldn't be 2.8. September shouldn't be 2.8 either. But obviously, we cannot control the claim. That is the number that we actually have, that we actually paid out.
The amendment, what are you, what is that covering right now? Like, is the, are we paying September claims with that amendment?
So we still have roughly 1 million in the bank right now.
Okay.
So we don't want to get to the point that, you know, the November board meeting is not here, and then we have to call an emergency board meeting just to make the payment. So that's the reason why we propose to transfer it now, even though it's look like that we'd be able to cover the claims for October.
Okay, so are, is it looking, September, for the most part, has already been paid, correct? So we're looking at October, November, December?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my other question was...
And the runout.
I'm sorry?
And, and the runouts. Meaning that if you have the, if you go to the doctor in December, for example, we're not going to get billed until January, February, or March, and sometimes can run out over six to nine months. It depends on how, because the insurance, they actively fight back with the doctors and try to lower the claims, right? So...
And that was my next question. What is the actual filing deadline on the policy itself for the providers? Because I know some insurances, you have till December 31st of the following year to file any of your claims. So that's why I'm wondering, what is the deadline on the policy that they have? Because we could potentially be looking at getting claims in, or corrected claims, or appeals through December of next year, possibly, based on what that deadline is.
That's a great question.
We probably have to defer to the benefits department.
Yeah, we could get you that information. I'm sure that we've got it. I don't have it on me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if I'm reading my screen right, then Mr. Macias, you are next.
Very important questions and information that we're going through, and Laura told me she was going to pull this one, so it was anticipated. But I guess I would probably like to look at things after November 4th, because obviously, November 4th is going to be extremely critical on how all the numbers play out. And it might save us time, because obviously, whatever the numbers look like, either pro or against, would be significant. Would that be stated correctly, Mr. Kingman?
Yes, as the outcome of the VADER will affect the budget.
And so what I want to just reaffirm, earlier, you had made the comment that we had 34.3 million in debt, but 27.5 is reoccurring. Is that...
Yes, so the 34 million you refer to is basically the deficit for this current year, because we have the transfer out to the self-funded. But the 27.5 is a recurring deficit, yes.
And so if the VADER were to succeed, we would see an influx of revenue this year applicable to everything, correct?
Yes, and that will bring in roughly 21 million. So, you know, the deficit will be reduced to about 6.5.
Obviously, I'm looking forward to those conversations after the election, and I think that's where I'll focus a lot of my energy, in determining what we need to do. The last question is, we do use snapshot for budgetary reasons, as well as for academic reasons. What day is snapshot?
So snapshot is last Friday of October.
Okay.
But to Ms. Ryan's point, we do use ADA, which is basically every single day, the accumulation of every single day for the attendance to calculate the...
Yes.
The income that we get, the revenue that we get. And the 6.5 million is prior to any adjustment related to the ADA. But for the size of the district, the budget is roughly 271 million, so the 6, the 6.5 million, I don't think it would be a difficult task compared to the current deficit to address.
Of course, I was going to conclude with ADA, and I'm aware of that. But I also know that for our forecast, we're very conservative with our ADA as well. So you did not have it at the max that we could have potentially had our ADA at. Am I correct? When we did the budgets, it was more conservative.
So the budget was built based on the same ADA you said last year, subtract the pre-K3. So it's already accounted for the elimination of the pre-K3 program. So if any adjustment need to be made, you know, it would be on top of that, but it's not going to be significant, because we already addressed for a portion of the decline in enrollment and ADA already.
All right. Thank you.
And last year's projected was lower than actual, correct? Last year's projected ADA, what we budgeted for was lower than what it actually came, we had a higher average daily attendance than what we budgeted for last year. This isn't a hard question, correct?
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
We did have higher last year.
Got you.
Okay, Ms. Stanford, your backup?
This is just a quick question. Mr. Kingman, when you're calculating per-student allowance or allotment from the state, what do you use? What figure do you use for the amount of money that we expect per student?
So I think that the number is on the efficiency report, I think it's around 10,000...
Even?
Per, I mean, it's not even, I think it's 9,000, 900 and something, but it was on the efficiency report, the breakdown of per-student that we have compared to other districts.
And that includes the basic allotment, which is now 6250.
6250, yes.
And then, in addition, it includes grant, different grant monies and...
And tier-two and all of that. Tier-two, which is the golden pennies and the copper pennies that we were talking about, on top of the basic allotment. And also on top of different allotments, such as bilingual allotment, city allotment, and all of that combined.
Okay, broken down to a per-student.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I think I'm the last one now with the button. I just wanted to, something, Mr. Macias said, I think it said, I don't know, now I lose track of who said it. But, so you've taken, when you take out the non-recurring debt, like self-funded, we're at 27.5, but you didn't take out the non-recurring...
Payments.
Revenue of 2.5. So really, we're back up over 30 then, once you take out things like property tax audit. Do we have, is there one or two into this number?
So there's one. This is 2024.
Because the other one went into...
We only did the...
We got one right at the end of last year?
Yes, you are correct. And we also have one more, yes, pending. So, you know, that is the reason why, you know, the insurance, we know for sure that's one time, but after this year's go away, however, the audit for the property value, you know, we will keep doing it year after year after year. So I do understand that it is kind of one time, because we only can do it one time for 2024. However, we still have 2023, and next year, we might do it for 2025 and things like that.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other questions before I ask Ms. Stanford for a motion? Ms. Stanford, would you, you pulled this, would you like to make the motion?
Okay, so I make a motion that, wait a minute, that we approve the attached budget amendments to the budget for the 2026 fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Stanford, second by Ms. Canoyer. Let me keep going till the next screen. Okay, now you can go ahead and vote. Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next agenda item, purchases over 50,000. I'm not sure if everybody on the board even saw the late addition to this one today, which was, I thought I printed it, $96,000...
I hear you.
No, thank you. For, for some additional training for, specifically for high school algebra. And I guess my question on this one was, and only at the high schools, well, 40% of our students take it in middle school. And when I went back and looked at the scores from last year, algebra was actually our highest math scores of any grade out there, right? Third grade was lower, fourth grade was lower, every single grade was lower than high school algebra I was. So if we, if our kids are struggling in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math, before they get to high school algebra, and we have 96,000, why are we not putting that against math at a turnaround school, math at a targeted intervention school, or something else? And is there a menu of options we can look at of how to spend that 96,000? Because maybe we could do more, add more, was it Papaya? I don't remember what the name of the Patagonia, whatever the name of the tutoring company is, right? Like, we have a lot of, a lot of math strugglers in the district at a number of campuses. And it's like, by the time you get to algebra, well, if we start in third and fourth grade math, then six years from now, we're not going to have an algebra problem, hopefully, right? Because they're not going to be below grade level. So are there other things we can use this money for that maybe we can put against either a TAP, a TIP, a LIP, a whatever, CAPA, all the different things that we have?
So last year, when we got the scores back, it was algebra I that became a concern for us. We thought we would do better even at the middle school level. And what happened is, one of the interventions that we had for this year was at middle school, we brought in Bluebonnet Carnegie coaches to walk through. And the feedback that we've been getting from those coaches being able to walk through at the middle school level was pretty good. They're going into every class at least once a month, and actually touching with each teacher, giving feedback. Now, one of the biggest areas where we have the most kids testing is algebra I. And I'm not confident about the 40% of them taking it in middle school. It's my understanding that more of the students take it at the high school level. When I asked them to pull up the numbers, they brought back around 13 teachers across the district.
We have 13 teachers teaching algebra I. Sorry to cut you off, Dr. Phil.
No, go ahead.
We actually have 314 students in eighth grade taking algebra I. We have 1,345 students in ninth grade taking algebra I. Out of the total ninth-grade enrollment is 1,749, if you could look at all across all three, well, actually, even throw in Injeta. You're looking at 1,749 kids in algebra I at the high school level, and 1,345 of them are taking algebra I and will test algebra I star this year. The 40%, I do want to touch on that a little bit. The 40%, Ms. Ryan, that you're talking about, is that the state is now requiring us to look at the number of kids that took fifth-grade math, that scored in the 40 percentile of the fifth-grade math, in the meets, in the meets area. And we have to get those students, and they want us to do, they're calling it the middle school advanced math track. And so they want us to, and you can help me out, Sessi, because I'm going into your area a little bit here. They are wanting you to use their performance from fifth-grade math, and if they scored in the top 40%, they want you to put them on an advanced track. The state wants you to put them on an advanced track, so they can end up taking algebra I as an eighth grader before they get to high school. What we are seeing, and what the state is seeing, is that we are placing these kids on this advanced track, but some of them are struggling, because fifth-grade math is very different from sixth-grade math. And so that's where the 40% is coming from. Not 40% of our students that are going into middle school have already taken algebra I. That's, that's where the 40%. So we have 1,345 students right now sitting at our high schools that will take algebra I in the spring of this year. The Bluebonnet adoption and implementation is something that we did all the way through algebra I. We specifically initially focused on just middle school, because that is where, for the lack of better words, that was where the bleed was. We saw it in the numbers, and we have talked a lot on this board about math scores. And so we really wanted to concentrate on building not only the skills of our students, but building the skills of our teachers to deliver the instruction with fidelity to the math textbook that we, our curriculum that we had adopted. What we are finding in walking classrooms, and all the different, different ways we do it, when we're looking at the implementation of Bluebonnet, when we're looking at the performance right now on just initial BOY data for math at high school, and what we're looking at as far as our unit assessments are concerned, is that we need additional support in tier-one instruction, that's in-classroom instruction, in algebra I at the high school level. For the, for the sake of consistency in the vertical alignment that we're doing, we are already contracted with Carnegie Math, who created Bluebonnet. They are sending their coaches right now to work with our middle school teachers, and they walk their classrooms, they debrief with the teachers, they sit through, and they actually provide job-embedded professional development based on what their walkthroughs are seeing. We did not contract with our high schools for that, because we were really, really concerned with the middle school performance. I can tell you right now, we're, this is week 10 for us. After 10 weeks of walking, with all the professional development, we still have some of our teachers struggling to implement with fidelity the Bluebonnet materials that we have purchased for algebra I. My concern is that, yes, we do have turnaround campuses at middle school, but we also have campuses at the high school that have to do a TIP. They are also requiring to do better than what they did this past school year. It is our goal that if you were a C, we want you to be a B. If you were a D, we want you to be a B. I skipped C on purpose, we want you to be a B. And so in order to do that, we have to put the money where our mouth is, for lack of a better word. We're going to have to invest in our teachers. Tier-one instruction, in-classroom instruction will not change if we do not support our teachers. And they're showing us right now, 10 weeks into the school year, that they need additional support. The best way I can get, to get to that, is to provide the support through the company that created the materials that they're using and that we want to be implemented fully.
And if I may add to that, Dr. Toppin, for the accountability purposes of our district, the high schools have a greater proportion and a greater impact to our district accountability. So when we're looking at implementing an academic CAPA, you really aren't just focusing in middle school where the turnaround plans are, you are really focusing at the entirety of instruction. And so if we're trying to build up instruction in alignment with our high-quality instructional materials, you also want to focus at the campuses that will have the greatest impact, which would be high schools to our district accountability.
Yeah, I think we just, we have to get to this move where we start doing data-driven spending. spending, right? Where, because there's, there's far, there's lots of cool stuff that we really need, but there's more cool stuff we need than there's going to be money for. So we have to be able to, this is part of the monitoring part, where we're like, why do you want to look at dashboards? Well, certain dashboards, as you're watching things, it would make sense. So I can't wait to see BOI and unit assessments and see that of all the math and all the grades, that our high school algebra is the lowest? Great, I guess if that's what the data shows. But it gets really hard to sell to certain teachers on certain campuses and certain administrators and principals, right? Where they may have asked for an RTI math person, but instead we're sending, like you mentioned getting over to JECCA to teach algebra. Well, we had 100% passing rate at JECCA in algebra last year. Congratulations, JECCA, you're awesome and you're amazing. But we have other campuses where we had 16% of the kids pass, not 100%. So those are, the dollar can go here, or the dollar can go here, and it gets really hard to justify why we're putting a dollar here without that data to help drive our spending. So, you know, hopefully in the future, we can start seeing that data, start seeing alternatives so we can choose what the highest priority for the board is and then spend the money in that way. So.
So if I may, Dr. Fields.
Yes, please.
So one of the things that we look at every year is that when we, by the time school starts in August, the STAR data is old. And so we made decisions in June, in July, in August, based on old data, okay, last year's kids. It's good for instructional purposes for us to look and see, okay, where do we need to make changes with instruction? The reason why we wait until we get BOY data for math is because it's given us our first baseline of where our kids are that are sitting in our seats. Right now, we're going to be sitting in those seats when we test in April. And so we need that baseline data to, in order to see, so if we look at last year's data, we can say, yes, the algebra scores didn't look bad last year. It could have been a whole lot better, but it wasn't bad. But here's, here's the issue. That's last year's kids, those kids are sitting in 10th grade right now. I'm concerned about the freshmen that have come in, that have shown us for the last two years that they are struggling with math, to, to the area that there's significant gaps in their learning. We have to equip our teachers to address those gaps. We went and moved the curriculum out and brought in new curriculum. We need to give the curriculum time to work, but we also, in the meantime, need to equip our teachers to teach at the level of rigor, at the level that the state is asking our students to learn. Secondly, yes, we had 100% passage rate in JECCA, and I know Ms. Guzman Jeffrey's going to look at me, but we did not get seven distinctions at JECCA. So when I'm looking at data, you can be 100% passage rate. What I'm looking at is if every kid is passing at the level where they're going to be ready for post-secondary work at the next level. So every principal that I asked, I said, until we get 100% and 100% in the masters, we got work to do. Bottom line. That's how we talk to everybody.
And we look forward to the data. That's the thing.
Yes, ma'am, and I can give you a little, I can give you a little insight to the data right now. In ninth grade, on MAP, which is our beginning of the year assessment, our universal screening, screener, we're looking at, we are at the 29th percentile in comparison to the rest of the nation.
And that's what the board needs to see. Because we're 10 weeks into school, and this board has not seen a single piece of academic data from this entire school year. So when we talk about monitoring oversight, y'all got to just start feeding us.
Ma'am.
Because we don't see any of that.
Ms. Ryan, y'all didn't get the BOY report last year until this month. It's coming to you.
Okay.
So I'm telling you that I, that we are getting things ready to give to you so you can see, but I can see things faster than I can create for you to look at.
Well, we have to make decisions, and we got to update it to back up our decisions.
And so we need to be at the 50th percentile to show that our kids are ready to access on-grade level learning. Right now, that 29th percentile is telling me that we need to equip our teachers so they can teach our kids at the level that we need them to teach them at. Thank you.
Okay. Do I go to, which one's always first? So that's Mr. Macias? Make sure I, yes, Mr. Macias.
I just want to caution the board and Ms. Ryan as board president, this is far beyond the scope of this discussion. You've gone so deep with this, this should be its own separate agenda item. This is a 50,000 plus. I know you want the rationale and you ask, but good Lord, we're like way far where we need to be. So that's just one point, so I'll be brief on mine. This could be an agenda item, and we could talk about all the math scores and all that kind of stuff. Management, Dr. Fields, Dr. Toppin, Dr. Sun, I agree, let's do what we can to support students in high school. Math has been an issue, and we've talked about that on this board a long time. I also caution my colleagues not to get stuck in the idea that we need to monitor things every week or every month. We're not managing the district. When we talk strategy and budgets and policies, we do them at the appropriate time, not every meeting. So for right now, this expenditure is rational. It makes sense. It's supporting kids, and that's it. So thank you.
Ms. Canoyer.
If you don't mind, Ms. Canoyer, I just also wanted to say that this is coming out of title funds, and it's something that can be paid for from the title funds. If it was coming out of local funds, that would be different. But this is one of the things that we can do with the title, I believe it's Title IV funds. And we saw the need for it based on the BOY. We just had the BOY results about a week and a half in, so we're just trying to move ahead and get this done. No, sorry, Ms. Canoyer.
Ms. Canoyer, go ahead.
Thank you. Moving to a new curriculum is very challenging, especially when you're moving to one that is the depth and complexity and rigor that Bluebonnet is. Providing the professional development upfront is extremely helpful, but it's not until you're actually in teaching it and absorbing what the lesson is going to be personally before you teach it to the students. And that's where the coaching comes in. There are, there are people who are very challenged with moving to a new way of thinking, which is what this is. So how do you move your kids to that when you don't get it yourself? I'm excited that we can go in and hopefully work on some of these challenges before testing, instead of saying, oh, my gosh, look, look, look what happened, what are we going to do for next year? And to Dr. Duarte Toppin's point, this is a different group of students that took Algebra I last year. So we're, we're reacting to that and planning ahead for this. I also want to say that $96,000 is not a lot for, for what we're going to get here. I think that it's extremely important that our teachers feel supported, that they have people they can go to for questions. I personally spoke with the Algebra I teacher at JECCA when I was over there for another event, and she asked me, you know, she's, she's the only one teaching Algebra I at JECCA, and she feels a little left out, which, you know, as a teacher, it's extremely important to have your, your teammates to go and bounce ideas off of. And so this will be particularly helpful for her to get our students to that high level that we know that those JECCA students can, can achieve. So I'm all for this. Any way that we can support our teachers and implementing something that we have given them, that they didn't have a lot of input necessarily on at the very end, I'm, I'm all for.
Mrs. Lee.
Yeah, I, I do agree on, for, for this expense, just because for me, I seeing that, you know, it's already servicing the, some, the middle schoolers for Algebra I, how, it's like, it's kind of like unfair for the other kids who's taking Algebra I regular coming in for high school. So isn't it, I just see it like it's not fair for like the, the kids that are getting, you know, like luckily, like, you know, my, my daughter is taking Algebra I right now for eighth grade, but for the regular ones coming in for the ninth grade at, you know, at high school, why can't, why can't they have that service as well where the teachers have, you know, like coaching for, for the Bluebonnet, right? For the Bluebonnet, Bluebonnet teachers, like what, what Metzger is having. So I guess that, yeah, for $96,000, I think it, it could, especially you mentioned, Dr. Fields, it's coming from some of the title funds. So I guess it's, I, I'm okay for it for like, if the teachers really like, you know, asking for us this expense, then yeah, I, I guess, yeah, I'm all for this one.
You bring up a good point, Ms. Lee. So what you're saying is in eighth grade, where the students are advanced, there have Bluebonnet coaches coming in assisting those teachers to coach up the advanced students. At the high school, where you may have a student repeating Algebra I and their first attempt at it, and not as gifted, there's no one in there coaching up that teacher to perform Algebra I. Excellent point, excellent point.
Mrs. Potte.
I do just want to start off saying that I am going to support this measure, but I do appreciate the additional information that was just given. Had Ms. Ryan not been asking these questions, I wouldn't have gotten that information. And I do like that I now know that we're sitting at 25%. That is absolutely an issue. However, if I didn't have that information prior, it would have felt a little bit off to just vote on something without all of the information. I appreciate that you don't normally give out the BOY scores until October, which is completely fine, but at the same time, we are presented with this information, or with this agenda item that was added relatively last minute. So we weren't given the opportunity to ask these questions prior. This information was important, and I absolutely support supporting those teachers, but I absolutely support Ms. Ryan's right to ask these questions. Because it informs us all, whether or not, we want to admit that, that it informs us as board members as well as the audience. Because it, it can look very strange when you're sitting out there and you're saying, well, why are we giving money to JECCA, which I love JECCA, I'm not picking on them, but just case in point. Why are we giving money to JECCA when maybe we could be giving that money to Candlewood? Or maybe we could be giving it to a different campus that may seem like they need that more. So I appreciate the information from you, Dr. Duarte Toppin, I really do. I appreciate you asking the question, Monica, or Ms. Ryan, I'm sorry. Because I don't always know what questions to ask. So again, fully support the measure. I fully support our teachers. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I cannot talk you guys up enough. But that was just a little comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, to caution everybody, I guess, on the board, and remind everyone that this board is supposed to spend 50% of their minutes in board meetings, talking about student academic outcomes. We are just not contract approvers. We're not just money approvers. 50% of our meetings are supposed to be talking about kids and staying student focused. And when there's limited money, then it's incumbent on us to make sure every single dollar is used as wisely as it can. I wish we had unlimited money so we could give every principal every single thing they have ever asked for, every teacher everything they've asked for. But that's just not the situation any school district is in right now. So yeah, I'm going to continue to scrutinize every purchase because we have Pork Village that might need extra tutoring, we've got Metzger that might need an after-school. We have so many things our babies need, right? And, and let's just work on data-driven prioritization of our spending so we're making, we can feel like we're making the best decisions we can for our kiddos. So, all right, I will move.
I have a rebuttal.
Oh, go ahead.
So obviously, I disagree. I do appreciate information, but let's be clear, this agenda item is 50,000 plus. If you want to talk about academics, Ms. Ryan, put an item on the agenda that's specific to academics. So we have that power of the agenda. This just got way far, and it's just my opinion, I mean, my colleagues don't have to agree, but bottom line is, let's focus on the work and move on. So.
All right, barring any other discussion, I move that we approve expenditures equal to or greater than 50,000.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ryan's, second from, was you, Ms. Stanford? Sorry, I wasn't looking down your direction. Okay. All right, hold on, let me hit a few more buttons. Okay, you can proceed to vote. Oh, I thought I hit it. There we go. Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're moving down to, no, wait, I'm before you because I pulled N. Hold on. I pulled N. Oh, sorry, I just.
Election services.
Oh, I have just one question. Sorry, where's my question? I have my question somewhere. I get too many papers on my desk. Oh, on page three of this document, it says that we owed 142,000 to Bear County no later than October 13th. Did we miss the deadline to pay for election services? Right there in the middle under Article Six, cost of service and bill.
This is Ms. Holmes' area, so I defer to Ms. Holmes.
We didn't receive the election contract before the September date, before the September board meeting. I did call them and let them know. They said it would be no problem to take it to October.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure, because I know, like, my, my, I think I'm on the bottom of having to sign something on here, so I just wanted to make sure, and I'm sorry, I didn't get to this page of it until the very last minute. So that was the only question I had on that one, was I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss a deadline. Did anybody else have a question on the election services? If not, there we go. Getting back to my agenda, then I move that we approve the contract for election services for the November 4th, 2025 election.
Second.
What's that?
Second.
Oh, yes, sorry, no, I heard Ms. Stanford first. All right, so motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Ms. Stanford, and we will proceed to vote. Okay, motion passes seven, zero. All right, now, Ms. Stanford, now we're on to you with O.
Yeah, with O. Okay, so O represents 600, what?
Library materials.
699 new library titles that we have to approve the purchase of. And it's been on the website for what, a month?
It's been on the website for 30 days. It's required under the new Senate Bill 13 that it be posted for 30 days for public view. We did post it in the messages that went out across the district so that the community would be aware as well.
Have, have you had any response?
We have had zero forms completed, we have had zero response, and no one has questioned any of the items on the list.
Okay, well, I just wanted parents to know that I went through every one of those 699 titles. I did. And I pulled a list out of New Braunfels from parents that objected to certain titles, and I compared that list to all 699. So whoever did this choosing did a great job. Looks like a really good.
Thank you.
There, there weren't any objections, but I did want to make a note, I did want people to know, especially if parents hadn't had the time, because that's a lot to go through. And I did compare it to lists that parents did object to, and there were not any on there. So I just wanted to make that statement, and that's all I had on that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Sorry, I got to clear that. Any other discussion on O? All right, would you like to make a motion?
Okay, so I move that we approve the purchase of library materials to be added to the Judson ISD library collection.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Stanford, second by Ms. Canoyer, and go ahead and vote. Oh, Ms. Canoyer hit it again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Miss, oh, I'm sorry, Miss.
Didn't go.
And we lost Ms. Lee. What do I do, Suzanne, do I just proceed and I'll absent her?
You want me to push abstain?
No, you can't.
No, don't do abstain. Absent.
I'm sorry. All right, so now I can proceed and it'll, okay, motion passes six to zero. Sorry, I didn't notice she had left. So, all right, that finishes up consent. Ms. Canoyer, I believe you have proclamation to read for us.
I do, and I'm so excited to read it. Judson ISD Principals Week is an opportunity for Judson ISD to honor and recognize the contributions of principals and the success of Judson ISD students. School principals play an integral role in nurturing and a positive, student-centered culture in elementary, middle, and high schools throughout Judson. We, the Judson Independent School District Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim October 20th through 24th, 2025, as JISD Principals Week, and urge students, staff, and parents to express their appreciation and continue to encourage, support, and recognize our school principals. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Canoyer. So wonderful to see everybody here tonight, too, in person. All right, now we are going to move on to discussion and action items, so we'll turn the shack over to you.
Definitely, the first one is just asking the board to consider and take action for approval of our established and what we're recommending as the members listed to be appointed to the School Health Advisory Council. The shack.
I'll just say, I love that you got that many volunteers, or were they voluntold? Either way, their names are on a list, right?
Names are on the list.
So, you know, and out in our community, if you're ever just looking to just get more involved in the district, right? I'll just say, I love that you got that many volunteers, or really voluntold, either way, their names are on the list, right?
Names are on the list.
So, you know, and out in our community, if you're ever just looking to just get more involved in the district, right, and be involved in something, like, they'll take as many people on the shack as they, as people will show up and, right, because people rotate on and off, and people have stuff going on, too. So thank you to all of these volunteers for doing this, but if you missed out on this round, watch the website for when meetings are going to happen, and you are welcome to roll on in and see what it's all about, and in case somebody goes off the committee, it'd be nice to have some people waiting in the wings who are interested in serving on that, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or discussion before we do have to approve the membership of it? So, all right, do I have a motion on eight A?
I move that we approve the list of members to the Judson ISD School Health Advisory Council Shack for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
I'm going to give credit to Ms. Canoyer on the motion and Mrs. Potte on the second. I think she beat Ms. Stanford by a moment.
She won, yeah.
All right, if no further discussion, go ahead and cast your vote. Hit it one more time.
Oh, sorry. Put you as a-
Okay, motion passes seven zero. All right, cruising right along. Eight B, as we've been going through our contracts as the board, just like we did with the financial audit firm, anytime we identify any of our, you know, long-term contracts that we haven't rebid out in over five years, we should be doing the best we can to try and rebid out those contracts. Our board legal services has not been put out for bid, that I can find, since 2016, which is over nine years ago. Six of us weren't even on the board at that time. So that one is kind of due to be rebid out because it's well over, you know, the five-year guideline. So with the new procurement rules, our board expenditures technically can go up to $100,000 without being bid out. That was something that's just changed on September 1st, but, and last year, the board only spent about $38,000 on our board legal services. So while we technically don't need an RFQ, I don't think it would hurt for us to go out. It's a great way to get some formalized proposals to look at and solicit, you know, a number of responses from law firms. So as a way some other districts have done it, is I recommend that we just put together an ad hoc committee who can get a copy of the old RFQ, make sure it goes out, gets sent out, make sure we have all the, everything packaged back up, make sure we have a scoring rubric, make sure we have some interview questions ready, and then set up an interview schedule, and then we can set up a special board meeting workshop, and then the people who have bid on it then come in, and they do 15- to 20-minute interviews with those legal councils, everybody scores, and then we just have new legal council, or have existed, or we've rebid out the legal council. So, and then the great part of an RFQ is then everybody else can be still on a standing list, so if the board ever needs legal anything else, they can still be found qualified. And then that's what we had done back in 2016, so there was a standing list of legal firms. So, any questions about that? I'll be working with Dr. Fields to find all these as they've come up once the last time we bid this thing out, and make sure that we are always like, the general purposes, the general education things that had been over five years old, that's why we had a new one of those last year also.
Yeah.
Sorry, hold on, let me hit proceed so I can go to the next push buttons, so.
Yeah, I have a quick-
I heard a voice, yes.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ryan. Yes, thank you for saying that, because technically, for the legal services, we do not have to go out for an RFQ per the CH legal, but I, but the recommendation would be to go out for an RFQ, just to making sure that everybody have the fair opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I think it's a good process for, I mean, we're a new, we're a new board, right? So many new people on here, and as we go as a team, you know, as we go through, I think it'll be a good process for us to exercise as a board from selecting. Mr. Macias.
Typically, I can support measures like this. I think it's important that we do go for RFQs. The problem is, it's literally as the year begins, so we're in October, going, ready to go into November. The reason Walsh has been with us, and again, this is my humble opinion, is that their services have been cellular services. We have a good law firm, a good relationship with Walsh. I'm just concerned about the timing. I think if you want to do this, this might be something you might want to entertain as we start the fiscal year in July, and I don't think we need an ad hoc committee. We just have people come and talk if that's what you ultimately want. But we have a lot of critical pieces right now with everything that's happening, with our Vader, with personnel, and I would hate to have to bring in, and I'm not even saying bring in, because they could actually win the RFQ, but I hate to put that in in that regard. I think it's probably best to keep our legal counsel and the continuity that they bring. They certainly have been accessible, and the only other note is, I found it interesting that our legal costs have actually increased over the last several months, and so I'm going to try to get some research onto why that is. I don't know, I know the board president interfaces the most with our legal, so I don't know if there's more coming from you on that, but certainly we need to look, because the cost of going up very high.
A lot of grievances.
Okay, and so if it's grievances, again, I'll give kudos to Walsh, because we've seen some, but we've not seen all of them, which means they're getting resolved beforehand. But I think right now is the wrong time for this request. I do like the intent, and I do think in the future I could be supportive of it, but not at the moment.
Ms. Canoyer.
Thank you, I just want to say that I agree, we're in the middle of a whole bunch of stuff right now. This could certainly be something that's calendar to look at for the next fiscal year. There's too much going on, and the current firm has a great deal of institutional history that they rely on, that we rely on, as they navigate these crazy waters that we've been in. I would hate to disrupt the flow of that during the year.
Ms. Stanford.
Yeah, I'm just going to agree with that, that I think the continuity is very important right now, so I'd be in favor of looking at this maybe at the end of the fiscal year.
Yes, and so just to be clear to the new board members, there, this doesn't affect the district's legal counsel, so a lot of these cases, you know, whether it's HR, special education, all the other things a district does every day, there's, that's not what we're discussing, RFQing. This is simply your interface, your board legal counsel, and who you have for that, so.
I do have a question.
And it never gets better, because it's, we head into budget season, and then we head into summer, and it like, there's never a good time, so when contracts come up, and I believe October was the, one of the dates of when this was last done, so.
My question would be, the current contract with the legal firm is for both the board and the district. If we were to change that to just the district and not the board, would that then be a change in the contract, where we would have to go out and then redo it for ourselves as well? Or are you able to adjust that contract based on the board saying, we want to go with a different firm, you guys stay with? Because that would be a change in the contract, correct? I guess I'm looking at purchasing and-
Correct, and we just have a retainer with them, so if you, if the board chooses not, and we don't know who's going to win, like, right, like, we're, let's not presume, you know, we're just going back out for bid, and very well might be the same legal firm that wows the board or whatever, but we just have a retainer agreement with them and other law firms, because we use other people sometimes, too. So once you have another firm qualified, let's say if you did want to switch to firm XYZ, then you'd have a new retainer agreement with them, and then you choose who you use at any given point in time, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it's up to the board to-
All right.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that, Tony, what were you saying?
I say it's up to the board to decide after the process of selecting-
But that's what we're trying to determine. Right now, we have a contract with Walsh-Gaigo's. They provide our district, as well as the board, legal-
Yes.
-issues. If we were to change that term-
We have to amend the contract.
So we'd have to amend the contract?
Yes.
So we wouldn't have to go out, we could just amend?
We can amend the contract, because technically, for professional services, the IFQ process is a recommendation, it's not by policy that we have to go out for an IFQ. So, you know, we do have to look at the selection, right, to select a firm, but the board would be the one who decide which one to go with.
But we would still have to go out for another selection.
He's asking, if we go out for board counsel, does he, is he going to have to go back out for district RFQ?
Thank you.
Or can he just amend the contract, or if, for some-
That currently says both.
I do think that we can amend. I do think that we can amend the contract and do not have to go out for the district, yes.
Yeah, and we can double check. There's a couple other, there's a number of school districts in the area that have done this with multiple law firms, too, so.
And Judson used to have it the same way.
And we did used to have it the same way, yeah.
For the last nine years, it hasn't been that way.
Correct, correct.
So if we're going to adjust that contract going forward, you would think that we'd have to go back out on both sides. If Tony says that you can amend without having to go out, I believe him, he's pretty sharp.
Yeah, because he's saying we don't even have to go out. We don't have to go out for professional services. We're saying, I think it's a good process to, for us, for us as a board to exercise, just go out, and that way we get the proposals back.
Yes, ma'am. If my opinion matters, I agree with the sentiment that there's a lot going on right now for us to be thinking about changing our legal representation to a group of people that we may or may not have.
Well, yeah, and some of it is the board gets to pick their legal counsel, right?
Understood.
And so six of us were not on this board when that was last selected. Only one person was, and actually, I think you were absent from that meeting, Mr. Macias, when it was voted on, if I looked at the agenda right. So, yeah, so it's just about us, you know, being able to interview and have, you know, this is us, we're the next, we're the board for the next two years.
Understood.
If not longer, so. All right, so I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't miss, oh, sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
I already spoke once, I was up, I just pushed again, but I'll defer to Ms. Jones since I have already spoken once and she has not.
Okay, then remind me to come back to you.
Okay, I just had a few comments. It doesn't seem like it's ever probably a really good time to do this in the school business, and it has been a really long time since it's been done. We could in fact end up choosing Walsh-Gaigo's again and possibly save money, correct? It's a possibility when you go out for that?
We do, we get to negotiate our contract.
So it's a possibility.
Professional rates are part of, in an RFQ, can be in an RFQ, and it's something that you can negotiate, fee schedules.
Okay, and I do think with all of the important things that we have coming up, it is best that we, the board feels comfortable and feels who we have representing us is in the best interest for us, especially with these important decisions that we have coming up. And I think anybody that goes out for the, puts in a bid, would be very well qualified to handle the situation, since that's the business they're in, they deal with that daily, so that's, thank you.
I just want to make a quick comment, that if you want, I mean, if the goal is to negotiate the rate with Walsh-Gaigo, then we can negotiate it right now, and we don't have to go through the process, because they are technically already out firm, right? So if you will disagree with their pricing, or, you know, instead of have to go through the whole process of posting and going out, and the goal, if the goal is just to renegotiate the rate, we can do it right now.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of factors, I think, more than just price, that could go into legal counsel, too. All right, so I think, Ms. Canoyer, you're up for round two.
Thank you. Let me just be really clear, I am not in any way, shape, or form wanting to leave Walsh-Gaigo's. They are the preeminent school law firm in Texas. We have been very well served by them. I trust them, they know our history, and I do not want to consider moving to another firm. I'll be honest about that.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to give that impression. This is part of just good business practices. We've had an audit firm for entirely too long and finally bid that out for RFQ, right? And so this is part of board governance, is you're always bidding out your contracts all the time, and may the best man or woman from, you know, always rises to the top on those types of things. So having a renewed RFQ standing there is just good business practice. So I'm going to move that the board, make a motion that we move forward with the RFQ process and bring back proposals to the board for interview, for board legal counsel.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Mrs. Potte. All right, we'll proceed to vote. Okay, motion fails, four to three. All right, we will move on to, the next agenda item is C. After the board approved the stipend market adjustment changes in July, some concerns were raised about the list that we approved. Three areas were specifically addressed. The, sorry, I call them dyslexia teachers, and that's the wrong word, certified academic language therapists. Sorry, I had to write that down. Were missing from the list altogether, when I tried to clarify with TASB, they just said they didn't have it in their database, even though most districts do pay that type of stipend. So based on the market information that did exist, it looks like that typical stipend ranged from 1,500 to 3,000. There were definitely some districts that paid well over that. But given the market data, plus the cult falling under the special education umbrella, and our district currently pays 2,300 for our special education resource teacher stipend, dyslexia teachers, I'm sorry, cults are in classrooms with students, you know, seven class periods a day, teaching reading and teaching their programs. So I would recommend that 2,300 sounds like a reasonable and, I believe, even a little under the market value for what that current stipend is. With 29 cults currently at 2,300, that would be about $66,700. Another one identified as missing were the UIL Unified Sports Coaches. Were missing from the list, I got the same response from TASB. These are UIL sanctioned sports, of which we've won three state titles, and currently those coaches are paid $0. I provided, I put on your desks the original proposal for those stipends that had been sent to us in spring, and it lists the recommended amounts. Those recommended amounts are far below what the other schools that do unified sports are, but looking at what that proposal was, all those coaches, the all-in price for those stipends would be $27,000. The final one that was identified was a head high school tennis coach. It looks like TASB, maybe not a bunch of sports people up there, but they lumped a whole bunch of groups of sports together and just put them all at 6,000, without any sort of regard to the type of sport, season length, or market value. No, I don't have a kid who plays tennis, so makes no hill of beans to me. But, so even though tennis is a full two-season sport, they have a full season in fall and in spring, and the market value was 8,200, you can see on there that they actually recommended a reduction down to 6,000 and lumped them in with things like cross-country and golf, instead of looking at the two-season sports. So I know we're in a limited funds environment, getting to 8,200 is probably not at all reasonable right now, but an increase of 7,000 would definitely put it closer in line to what TASB had recommended for the other sports, and that's only three coaches. So an increase to 7,000 is only a cost of 2,700. So I may not have placed this on the agenda, considering some of our financial constraints, but, you know, when the board just approved a significant amount of money out of our fund balance to pay for the pay increases for uncertified teachers and support personnel on top of what we were getting for SSRA and TRA, and I've heard my colleagues talk over and over about us being fair and equitable to all of our employees, it just didn't seem fair to have these groups bring this up and see what the discrepancies were and just let those oversights go. Some of these have been waiting multiple budget cycles for, to get this fixed, and if we're going to bring people to market, then we should be bringing people to market in a fair and equitable way. And especially because these personnel are with students every single day. This is, that's what they do. They are boots on the ground. So if I added up all those recommendations properly, I was at about 96,400. But those are the only ones that were brought up over the last two months to me as issues with what TASB had recommended, and I don't want a bad recommendation from TASB to result in inequity. All right, Ms. Canoyer. I think, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Macias, I'm looking at the thing wrong.
I had some commentary not too long ago that I put out on my social media, and it talked about how the state has created us versus them division, and they knew very well the inequities that that compensation plan was going to cause, and it has. Just two months ago, I had recommended an increase in academic coaches that did not go through, and as painful as that was for me, the realities are that we are in a financial crisis and that we- crisis and that we do need to see what the November 4th date does for us to make some really strategic decisions. I've always been a part, I guess I've lost four words, but those that know me, TSTA, Miller McKinney, AFT, they know that I've always supported employees and that I've always ensured that we fought to give them equitable salary, always. That's always been a very important core principle of mine. So, so it does hurt me to say at this point, we still have to pause. We can't take action on something without knowing if the Vator is going to pass or fail. The idea is that if it passes, it puts us in a better position. But at this juncture, these inequities were not a product of our own. These were not under our control. The state, I still say, they think they're school board members. And so we have work to do, and again, I do applaud your work and care about your concerns. But at this point, this is just one of those things we have to look at for next fiscal year and see what the Vator does. And that's really just the best way. It's not a choice I would like to make, but the realities are, again, we are in a position where we just have to be cautious about how we utilize our resources right now. And one last comment, I have visited with numerous counselors, they were here also a couple of months ago, and they understand, but they came here to make a very solid point that they deserve to be compensated equitably as well. So this is a tough time, but I won't be supporting this measure at this time, but I'm not disagreeable to examining it this in January, February, based on how the Vator goes.
Ms. Canoyer, is that right? Yes.
I agree with Mr. Macias, this isn't the time for us to look at this. I worked with so many amazing certified academic language therapists, and I personally saw with my students the effect that they have on the academic outcomes for these kids. You do amazing work. You are, you go through the equivalent of a master's level program in order to become that certified academic language therapist. When I worked in curriculum, I worked very closely with the dyslexia supervisors there, and I know what it takes. I know how hard you work. I know what amazing things you do. I know what the outcomes are for our students. My recommendation, just like I talked about with counselors, is that maybe we look at, because of the certifications that we're requiring, maybe we look at a different pay scale. I don't want to take it away from the raises they get, you know, from the retention allotment that comes from the state, but maybe because we have these higher requirements that they need to look at. So that's something I'll throw back at, at human resources to see, is that something that even is applicable? But I can't, I can't support this because I don't have enough information about where we're going to stand financially until December.
Okay, Ms. Stanford.
Yeah, I'm especially sympathetic to the dyslexia teachers. My best friend in elementary school had dyslexia, and back then, not that far back then, but they, they didn't catch it. They, they didn't find it. Kids that had that condition just suffered through, and luckily she managed to compensate, not even knowing what she was compensating for really till she was in adulthood. So that is such an important work, and I, I'm going to find a way to support you guys. But I did pull an agenda item last month regarding trying to create more of inequity for some people that were overlooked, and I took it off the agenda because of the unknown that we're facing right now. So, and I plan to bring it back, and I would like to see this come back. I just don't think it's the time right this minute for us to be able to, to handle that. But, but it's going to come back.
Ms. Lee.
Yes, I just, I just want to comment about, like, it's not that I don't support, support that the teachers that are here, it's just that, like my colleague said, that it's not really the right time. I just, you know, we all witness counselors are here, academic trainers, librarians, and like Ms. Laura said, I also put something on the agenda, but I pulled it out because it's, I just realized because it's not really like the right time for it. So I'm sorry that I'm not going to be supporting this right now, but it doesn't mean that I don't want it to come back. It's just that I don't want to, I just want to be fair to everyone who were not picked the last time for the comp plan, which I still have a hard time with it. But I just want you to all know that we can all go back to this with, also with my agenda aft, that's the thing, after the Vator, you know, results is, so, yeah, I'm so sorry, but it's, I hope that it wouldn't, you know, offend you guys or, I just want to be fair to everyone because we witnessed a lot here, and I, you know, we, we tabled it and we didn't, you know, you know, got a vote for it for them to have that increase as well. So I just want to be fair. Thank you.
Ms. Lee, I think the challenge for me is, is we just sat here six weeks ago and we pulled money added to our deficit to give an extra pay raise to uncertified teachers. We came out of fund balance, knowing all, none of the finances have changed in the last six weeks, right? We came out of fund balance to give raises to central office staff. And don't get me wrong, everybody works hard in this district and we only have so many dollars to give around, right? So when certain people on the board are voting to give central office staff but not principals and assistant principals, they were left off the pay raise, but uncertified teachers. And so we have parceled and created this division now because we're choosing who is getting those raises. And remember, a lot of those raises that were given, that was out of fund balance. There were no strings tied to it. We spent $400,000 out of fund balance that didn't have the rules. We could have given principals and assistant principals that one and a half percent pay raise, but it was a choice not to, right? So now it's another choice in how the groups are, and so this is just a giant mess. There's obviously four noes up on this board, so it's not even worth making a motion, but the dust has now settled and certain groups are going to see who got taken care of and their perception of how they are valued, and there's other going to be groups that didn't get taken care of and what their perception is of being valued. And I think that's just going to hurt us in the long run. So I don't have a motion to make on it because there's clearly four noes, whoever expressed their opinions on it. So I apologize to those of you who, errors from Tasby and erroneous stuff, you should have been included the first time, and I'm sorry I didn't catch it the first time around. So, go ahead, Ms. Stanford.
Yeah, on the uncertified teacher, didn't that, didn't their raise get negated, basically?
No, you said that.
It was in the 1.5.
Correct.
But then something else came in.
Yeah, they were given the 1.5, that's what the.
Backed it out. I thought it negated it.
What happened?
No?
I think she's asking the question, Ms. Davis. Tony, what was the end result of the DOI teachers? Can you guys remember?
They, they weren't originally on there, they were added back 1.5%.
I think what Ms. Stanford's trying to say, there was a deduction that was recommended before, and then if we went back and did the 1.5, did they come out even or did they come out up 1.5%?
The pay cut.
It was like a $2,000 pay cut that we approved on the board.
No, we approved 1,000.
Was it 1,000?
Yes, it was 1,000.
Because I think it came out to 177.
That was happened months before.
But then we did the 1.5, so what she, what they're trying to say is how did they come out based on what they had before?
It was an extra $15.
Yeah, I went from a 10% pay cut to a 5% to 1,000.
I'm trying to remember the details because there was a lot of back and forth. So it was an extra $15 or something, yeah. I'll provide the specifics on the Friday notes, but it did almost come out to a wash. It really wasn't a, a large increase for them.
But I'm acknowledging the inequity that we've been dealing with since the state made the decision they made, and I think we all are and want very much to find some way to, to balance it out some way, but we just have to have the right timing. And, and I don't think it should come across like we're being heartless if, if we're not trying to, to do that now. I think there's several things we're going to be bringing back depending on what happens in November. We have, we have a list of things waiting to come back to the table.
I, can I say something?
Ah, you can. I mean, I'm not making a motion, so we can continue to discuss if we want.
Well, my concern though is that it was discussed and some things were said, and I too want to say, the one on here about the unified coaches, I understand, but I hearken back to a few years ago, two years in a row, we said that there were going to have to be some hard decisions that were made. I applaud you guys for making those hard decisions now. Thank you. Going forward, I too want to be able to come back and readdress a lot of this stuff. To your point, Ms. Ryan, some of these things need to be corrected, but I also understand that going into the situat, we just need to have a clearer picture of how we're going to move forward before we make the decision. In addition, I don't want to give the impression that the 1.5 was a mistake in any part or that those people were undeserving of what you guys came back and did in an effort to try and do something for the people who weren't included in the state's dictation of 5,000, 2,500. And if any of our conversation made someone feel that way, I want to apologize publicly because giving it to them was not a mistake, and I don't think that not being able to move forward with this negates or makes it seem like what we did before was wrong. So if anyone took it that way, I just wanted to apologize publicly, and again, after November, I will be excited to be able to readdress a lot of these things.
Mr. Macias.
Yeah, I mean, I try to be careful, and I'm not a perfect human being, so I may say something up here that, that I wish I may have not stated, but for the most part, I want our employees to know that there is not a bias on this board. We're not trying to help other people versus other folks that may have been insinuated here. And then also that our DOI teachers play a significant role. If, if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're all going to be certified teachers, which is excellent to have a pipeline of teachers coming in. So the 1.5 and our very difficult discussion to even give some sort of raise was, was critical, was crucial, was needed. Now, that's also the same batch Dr. Fields where we received, I think, $900,000 from the state that we could use unrestricted, which wasn't enough. It wasn't enough, especially when they disproportionately gave us funds and said, you have to give 2,500 and 5,000 to teachers. I love that our teachers are, are being paid, but it left a lot of folks out. And I'm going to just go back to when I was here just two months ago, trying to get at least half of the stipend increased for academic coaches and had to sit and hear that this was the wrong time. So the equity of anything is that consensus is, let's just see what happens from November 4th. And then as Dr. Fields, I do believe in your commitment. We have a strategy, we have to retain talent, and we'll be able to revisit a lot of this. Ms. Stanford, you're also correct as well. These are conversations we will have to have and make some strategic decisions. And if by some craziness, we totally missed someone this last compensation plan, we have time to make that up this next fiscal year. And I'm fingers crossed and I think we'll be in position, but I just want to reiterate, all of our employees are valued. I appreciate every single one of you.
And Ms. Canoyer.
I just want to clarify that when, Ms. Ryan, you said that everybody in central office got a raise, that's not true. Anybody here get a raise? No. So that went to secretaries, people who are not administrators, who are not supervisors, the, you know, the people who are doing that grunt work down there. So I just want us to be very careful when we speak and be accurate.
Okay, so moving on to agenda item nine, if we want to go down the dais real quick and any update on your board training conferences and events, and then after that, we're going to pop back into closed session to do a few quick things and then vote on those. But we'll do nine first and then we'll come back and do closed sessions. So, all right, Mr. Macias, update on your stuff.
Yes, always open to be accountable. We did have a, an internal audit committee meeting. We're still sort of in a holding pattern because totally my fault in terms of trying to get the push of scope. Again, I hate to reiterate, but I said this earlier, I'm just waiting for November 4th. Then we can figure out what we need to do a little bit more. But the risk assessment is still a priority for the internal audit committee, and we will put together an appropriate scope so they can start doing that work. I did attend the Mexican-American School Board Association Conference. It was a great training. It was great to connect with folks across Texas and actually regionally from Arizona, California, New Mexico, Colorado, to get sort of that regional perspective on education and the challenges that we're, we're under. It's not just Texas. So, and then was real proud to have a few colleagues join me, but I guess I'll let them talk about it. The last thing I want to say is that I didn't say this during the construction report, but I did request that we have a ribbon cutting, and goodness gracious, two, three weeks later, we had a ribbon cutting, so, and then he scheduled it eight in the morning, I think. I'm not an eight in the morning guy, so I had to really fight to get there, but I, I wouldn't miss it. So again, kudos to administration for that. Thank you.
Mrs. Jones.
Okay, I just have several things. I was able to go to bike rodeo last night, and so I just wanted to say thank you to Latonya Jones for putting on an amazing activity for those kids. It was great to see all of them out there and all of the athletic department that helped and the students that volunteered. We had a lot of student athletes out there volunteering their time to help those kiddos, and so it was great to see their faces when they got their trophies. I was able to go to the Learning Academy celebration for them getting a B rating last year, so that was great to see the work that they do there at that school for those students. I also attended the tenor bass bash. It was the first time they put that on this year. It was amazing. The Wagner High School non-varsity choir, the Judson High School tenor bass, the Veterans Memorial tenor bass, Wagner High School's varsity tenor bass, and then they actually combined all of the middle schools to perform together, and then all of the middle schools, their boys choirs, performed with all of the high school choirs to do a song. They sang Lovely Day, and it was amazing. So thank you to everybody who helped put that on. The clinician who led them all at the final was Mr. David Short, and he did an amazing job with that, so I just wanted to throw that out there. And then also, I did receive some information I wanted to pass along from Mr. Posada, the music teacher at Candlewood. The Candlewood Honor Choir has been invited to perform with the Spurs game on Friday, November 14th at 8:00 PM. In order for those kids to perform, they do have to sell 100 tickets to the community, and they were only at nine tickets. So I just wanted to pass that along, that they do have a link on their page where you get 20% off your ticket. So reach out to them because that's an amazing opportunity for those kids, so we need to get those tickets purchased. I was looking at them, and so hopefully we don't have anything come up board-wise where I can take my family and go support those kids because that'll be four tickets. So I just wanted to share that. He's doing an amazing job with that music department over there. I saw them, they did a performance for their open house, I think it was, just recently, and it was great. So I wanted to share that for him.
Thanks for putting that out there.
All right, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, it's my favorite actually event, the bike rodeo, but I missed it. It's because my kids doesn't, when they're little, they somehow, they didn't have interest on. on bikes. I don't know. They have bikes, but they don't ride it. So every time in school, I always volunteer because of all the faces, you know, but I missed it because of college fair yesterday. I have a senior at Wagner and it turned out great because there's a lot of like universities out, like different states. I don't think I had that on my eldest son, so kind of like get me excitement just to be there and just almost, I want to like talk to every, every single one of them. But of course, my senior is only interested on some, so. And then I, we had the anti-bullying meeting, which I wanted to thank Dr. Johnson for that because it was really a great meeting. And somehow I think after that, because of, there's a lot of topics, especially mental health issues. So I believe that would be kind of like an umbrella with the Shack, right? So, so on the next, I believe the very first meeting for the Shack anti-bullying will be there too. And then, of course, I just, because my senior is, I'm a band mom, so it's marching band season. So I just want to give a shout out for our first band competition at Seguin where Wagner won the first place. And then we just, we just hosted last Saturday for the U.S. Bands Ludwig Classic where we didn't, unfortunately, we didn't kind of place, but they, the Wagner band got the best percussion, which my son is all happy because he's the captain of the drum line. So it's like kind of one award that he's been hoping for. And then for the last one, oh, sorry, I did attended the Masbah, the Masbah training, the conference. I know it says Mexican-American and I didn't even, I even say like, I'm not a Mexican-American, I'm Asian, but it's so nice to have, see all the different races there. And I did have a great three classes that I really learned a lot. And of course, there are Pride and Joy mariachi.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Everyone was just standing because they were really performed really great, like really professional wise, but they're only high schoolers. So that's kind of like really mind blowing, but they did great. And the last thing that I have here is, oh, the food bank at Metzger. I've always, I always find time to like volunteer as a mom before, but now this is, as a board member, and this is my first time, I'm, my daughter's first time attending it and she loved it because somehow her first class, I think they got excused so they could, you know? And she wanted to do it everyone. So yes, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Canoia.
Thank you. I go to a lot of events. Let me just highlight a couple of things that were, really stood out for me. I love to go and support the girls' sports and I'm sorry, boys, y'all have more people that come out for you. And so, you know, I have a vested interest as a female in supporting those. So I go to volleyball and I've been to games at Judson High School and Veterans. And unfortunately, those are always on Tuesdays and Fridays and those are some of the busiest days that we have in the district. So I don't make it to everything. But I do want to highlight the Judson High School Rocket Redout where the volleyball team collected funds and menstrual supplies to raise awareness of period poverty. And those donations went to the foster shelter at Boysville. So I'm super proud of Mr. Curtis Ruder, who is going to be on our Shack Committee and the Healthy Futures of Texas, who spearheaded that event. I think that it's something that's going to be an annual event, so all of you look out for that. Jeff, Judson Education Foundation is having a Designer Purse Bingo coming up. If you hadn't heard about that, all of you out there on the airwaves listening, please go to the Judson Education Foundation webpage or their Facebook page and all the details will be there. It's in December and we want you to come and support us. All the funds raised in these events goes back to teachers, classrooms, students. I was at the Bike Rodeo as well, the ribbon cuttings. I went to Universal City City Council last week. And, oh, Judson High School softball is having a fundraiser next Thursday as well. If you, if you like spaghetti, it's a great opportunity, $12 a plate. You can get it at lunchtime or you can get it in the, in the evening. And the Judson High School softball Facebook page has all that information as well. Next Thursday. And I think that's it.
Yeah, I have it on my calendar.
It is like the best spaghetti ever.
Yeah, it's great.
Every year.
It's a great opportunity to support a team.
I bring like eight of them home and that's all my, my family has to eat that for the week.
They will deliver.
Yes. All right, Ms. Stanford, sorry. I got distracted by food.
Okay, so I don't know if this is new that the district is doing or what, but going to the different schools to congratulate them for their improvement in grades, that's fantastic and I, I hope you continue to do that. But they brought a cake and balloons and took a lot of pictures to JLA, JMS, Woodlake, Jeca, Miller's Point. Did I miss any?
France.
And France.
France.
And I just think that's a fantastic thing to do. I got to go to most of those and just thank the teachers for the wonderful job that they've done for raising the grades or keeping them high. So.
Was Worthy on that list too?
Was Crestview? I went to Crestview.
We didn't start getting the calendar invites till a couple of them in. So there was also Worthy, Crestview, and then we started getting calendars. Sorry, we missed the first couple.
That's why we missed, that's why I missed Crestview.
It wasn't that we don't love you.
They should have been. I thought maybe it was coming up.
They did.
Okay, so Worthy and Crestview. Well, that's fantastic. I hope we keep doing that. I went to the Masbah Conference and people come to that Masbah Conference from all over the country. It's not just Texas. And our Judson mariachi team got a standing ovation. They did an amazing job. They really do sound professional. They really do. And we were so proud and we're going, "There are, there are mariachis." So that was an amazing experience. Went to the ribbon cutting and also to the anti-bullying meeting, which hopefully will be put under the Shack umbrella to where it can expand. That's it. All right, Mrs. Potte.
So I went to the opening of both Selma Elementary and Sibyllo Creek and that was beautiful. And I got to hold the big gold scissors and take a picture and show my daughter. She was very excited. Also attended the internal audit meeting with Mr. Masias and Ms. Ryan. I also managed on the same day that we did the ribbon cuttings to go to Hispanic Heritage Night at Crestview Elementary. My kids loved it and ate so much, just really delicious food. I have no idea what they were eating, but they were just running around, coming back with piles of it. It was great. It was a lot of fun. I also attended both the Hartman, that was yesterday. I'm very sore from lugging 50-pound bags of carrots. I'm not exaggerating. Yes, 50-pound bags of carrots were being dumped into trunks of cars. That was not fun. I'm not going to lie, it was, it was, it was difficult. And I also managed to get to the Metzger Food Bank and I love food banks. I'll be attending as many of them as I can, just throughout the year, obviously depending on schedules. I also attended the NEP luncheon, just saw Dr. Field speak and saw some of the cabinet members there. And I think that's what I did the last month. Just a few things, just a couple.
That's why I love being last because, yeah, everything, most of the things they did. So, but yeah, Wagner, can we get honorary powerlifting letter for Mrs. Potte? Because if you've worked a food bank, you know the cars don't always stop. They just keep going with their trunk open and you're chasing them with a 50-pound bag of carrots. So, but I love that one because, I love Metzger because it's all the LOC students and we get to talk to students. But I love Hartman because it's the Hartman families who are out there helping run the food bank, right? They are giving back to their own community. So it's so wonderful to work with that team out there and excited to get out to Woodlake. We haven't been to yet, but yeah, we'll be food banking it up. Let's see. I'm loving the Thursday and Friday night lights. And again, I'm not a football mom, I don't have a voice, but it, there have been so many middle school and elementary school nights. And it's the football players, the, I think it was the, was it the Pashal cheerleaders? We were trying to figure out which cheerleaders it was. We didn't recognize the mascot and their uniforms. But seeing the middle school and elementary school cheerleaders, the Kitty Hawk Band played with veterans and to see that pipeline, because that's what we're talking about, is growing the pipeline. You are a future Kitty Hawk flyer, you're a future patriot, you're a future whatever, and building those relationships ahead of time. And I'm seeing that in so many places. I go to a middle school cross-country meet, I see the Judson High School cross-country coaches there, right? Helping support their thing. So I love seeing all these pipeline things we have that are going on across the district. So, super exciting Finance Committee, yay, Monday at 6:00 PM. And just thanks to my fellow board members too and to you, Dr. Fields. What an eclectic, fun mix of people. Like this is going to be a good time. There are from, from community members to parents to different levels of staff, people with kids of all different ages, looking at the, I didn't know, I knew a lot of the names. There's a couple of people I look forward to meeting, but I think by us on the board, each finding two people in our communities and then some of the names that came out of the hat from district staff, just really exciting to get people's brains thinking together and just sharing, just gathering all that input from the community and being able to, you know, for them to have a voice, right? That's all, that's all it's really about. And it'll be, it'll be fun because parents don't know some things, right? About education and some educators don't necessarily know what it's like to be a parent today. So it's going to be exciting for those, for them to talk together and, and talk about funding priorities and finances and share each of those unique viewpoints with each other and kind of open people's minds. So I'm excited about that, Monday, 6:00 PM here. Will be fun. And then I'll be gone in a couple of weeks down to Harlingen and Brownsville for Leadership TSB. But other than that, I've enjoyed hanging out with my colleagues at so many events in the last month. I'm glad we're back at school. So, all right. So all we have left is the board now adjourning into closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-074, discussing personnel, the personnel report and updates, including new hires, resignations, and administrative appointments. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.076, discussing discussion regarding intruder detection, security audit, and pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, discussion regarding board member duties, roles, and responsibilities. The time is now 9:20 and we'll be back as quick as we can.
Principals, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1360.15]
Thank you.[160.19]
At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Jetson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students and support teachers. Early voting is October 20th through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at jetsonisd.org/vader. At Judson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students, and support teachers. Early voting is October 20 through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. At Judson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students, and support teachers. Early voting is October 20 through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. At Judson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students, and support teachers. Early voting is October 20 through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. At Judson ISD, our mission is to provide every student with the support they need to succeed. This November, our community will consider a voter approval tax rate election, or VADER. This VADER could generate $21 million in additional funding and preserve essential programs and services for students, and support teachers. Early voting is October 20 through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th and the last day to register is October 6th. programs and services for students, and support teachers. Early voting is October 20 through the 31st. Election Day is November 4th, and the last day to register is October 6th. Learn more at judsonisd.org/vader.
All right.
You got it, sir.
Oops. The board will now reconvene in open session. The time is, oh, I lost my phone, 10:29 PM. No final action, decision, or vote was taken while the board was in closed session. We'll go back to Agenda Item 5A. Do I have a motion on 5A?
I move that we accept the personnel report as presented.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Canoyer, I heard a second by Mr. Macias. And you can proceed to vote. Hit it one more time, Ms. Lee.
Oh.
No, sometimes it does. Okay. And motion passes 7-0. All right. Do I have a motion on Agenda Item 5B?
No action.
No, we do. We have to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Look at this.
Yes, sorry. 5B.
Jamison give you.
There is no special, nothing special.
Well, there was the last time, and I have that still, but I don't know that.
Oh, he did not give me special.
Let me use what I have from last time.
Okay.
I move that the board approve the written contract presented for Ms. Richardson and Ms. Martinez to receive a financial benefit for providing services outside of Judson ISD. Based on a determination that the contracts will not harm Judson ISD, the arrangement does not present a conflict of interest, and the services will be performed entirely on the administrator's personal time.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad you kept that in your notes, Ms. Canoyer. It's late at night, and I'm glad somebody remembered. So, motion by Ms. Canoyer, second by Ms. Stanford. All right. And we can proceed to vote. Oops. All right. Motion passes 7-0. Do I have a motion on Agenda Item 5C?
I move that the board not apply the Senate Bill 12 provisions applicable to grievance policies to any pending grievances that were filed prior to September 1st, 2025.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Canoyer, and I heard a second from Mr. Macias. Any discussion?
And Ms. Canoyer, repeat your motion again so I can make sure I hit the right button.
Yeah. This came right from Mr. Jamison. I moved, I move that the board not apply the Senate Bill 12 provisions applicable to grievance policies to any pending grievances that were filed prior to September 1st, 2025. In other words, we'll continue with those grievances under the old rules.
All right. And we'll proceed to vote. Okay. And motion passes 5 to 2. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 10:31 PM.